The following is a production of KeriTV, the Town of Keri's government access channel.
Call to order the April 21st meeting of the Keri Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Bush for our ceremonial opening. Ms. Bush?
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, ungod, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at Agenda Item 1.3, which is the adoption of our agenda. Staff is requesting that Items 610 and 611 for rezoning 14 REZ 08 Waukega Road properties to be heard before Items 6.8 and 6.9, 14 REZ 28 Waukega Road South. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So move.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now move to Item 2.1, recognitions, reports, and presentations. Mr. Smith will start us off by recognizing our visiting culinary students from France, followed by a presentation of a proclamation honoring Annie Chattell. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, you know, one of the most fun things that the sister cities of Keri do is they have exchange programs. And one of the longest-serving ones is the French Culinary Exchange Program. That it's been going on for so long, I can't remember the beginning date, but it's been a long time. And we have eight exchange students this year. And I would like for Charlotte Bachelay, Melis Le Brun, Lucine Guerri, Manon Gouya, Adeline Short, Marielle Dallman, Juliet Poche, and Brenda Flau, along with Annie. And our sister city representatives here to please join me at the podium. Thank you.
Join Jack Smith.
Yeah. Jacques Smith. That was the extent of his French.
I thought I'd been good. Jack Smith.
How are you all?
Hi.
Did you have fun?
Yes.
Did you have fun? Okay. Now, you know that all of Keri is watching you right now. There's like 153,000 people watching you right now. We hope, right? Well, on behalf of the council, we welcome you here. We hope you had a great time. And we have Barbara Shepherd here as our president of the Sister Cities Association of Keri. But this is also a very special time because Annie, you have been doing this for how many years now?
About 15 years.
15 years, and they're letting you retire?
Yes.
Well, that's just not right. But why don't you come up here so we can get you here? And I'd like to read this proclamation. "And whereas cultural exchanges with sister cities are very important to the Town of Keri, fostering international understanding and building relationships; and whereas Keri has been hosting students from our first sister city, La Tukee, since 1992; and whereas Annie Chattell, in her capacity as an instructor for the..."
Lycée Hôtelier du Touquet?
Did you hear that? Say that again.
Lycée Hôtelier du Touquet.
They didn't tell me how to pronounce it. The Lycée Hôtelier du Touquet has been bringing students to Keri every year since 2000. "Whereas Ms. Chattell has introduced over 100 students from La Tukee to the culture and diverse offerings of the Town of Keri and North Carolina. Whereas Ms. Chattell has forged many great relationships with business owners and residents of Keri; and she has taken the town's mission with her to France, where she perpetuates the visions of being honest, treating others with dignity, and providing excellent services to those that visit. Whereas Ms. Chattell's personality and energy will leave a lasting impression on anyone who has had the pleasure of spending any amount of time in her presence; whereas Ms. Chattell is retiring after many years of teaching English in the French school system in our La Tukee sister city. Now therefore, I Harold Weinberg, Mayor of Keri, North Carolina, on behalf of the Keri Town Council, do hereby join the members of the Sister Cities Association of Keri, the Wake Tech Culinary Arts Department faculty and staff, and the many hotels and restaurants where the La Tukee students have interned. To thank Ms. Annie Chattell for her loyal and dedicated service, I extend my personal best wishes upon her retirement and for continued success in life's pursuits. May God bless you in your future endeavors and travels, especially those as you come back here to visit us in Keri. And this proclaimed this 21st day of April 2015." Annie, we are so proud.
Thank you very much.
And we are so honored to present this to you.
Thank you.
It's all yours?
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'm very moved. Yes, I have been here for many years, and every year has been just a fantastic experience. And I am retiring, but for some people, retirement means old age, but not for me. The older I get, the younger I feel, and the fitter I am as well. So you're going to see me perhaps more often, not once a year, but many, a few times a year. And definitely next year. Okay, so I thank you very much. And also the host families of the past and of today, of course, Harold and Belinda, Wesley and Kelly, and Ken and Karen, and all the establishments of the past and of this year as well. It has been absolutely great. And Jeff is not here, but Karen is here on his behalf, and it has just been always extraordinary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just would like to say how happy you all are to be here in North Carolina, in Riley and Keri. It's a dream come true. Thank you so much for welcoming us here. It's an amazing experience, and it is huge to thank our hosting families and the establishments where I have been blessed for taking such good care of us. And last but not least, Mr. Jeff Hadley for his commitment for us to live this wonderful adventure. It is awesome.
Jack, I have to bring this down even lower. Jack just pointed at me, which I think means I have to say something. Don, I'll speak in English, so we'll make it. It'll be all nice. But I just want to thank the council again for years of support for Sister Cities Association of Keri, for this ongoing relationship, and for the other things that we do. You support us throughout the year, and we may not get the chance to always say thank you, but we really do appreciate your support.
Thank you. And before you go, just one other thing. Not only does the exchange offer an educational opportunity, I note, Annie, that the hosting that just my family has done has enriched my lives, and I'm hoping it has enriched many lives. And so you've done a great job. And of course, you've become a good friend over the years. Seeing you every year is a joy to me and is part of my spring. So I love seeing you here. I love having the students here, and I hope that your lives are enriched by your visit, and I hope you have a good time while you're here. Thank you all for being here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our audience is filled with special guests this evening. We also have Troop 214 from St. Michael's here earning a merit badge if you would stand so that we may recognize you at this time. If you're staying for the whole meeting, I hope you brought a sleeping bag. This is gonna be a long one. We're now at Agenda Item 2.2, and I'll recognize Mr. Yurha, who will present the Earth Day Proclamation.
Thank you.
Since its inception back in 1970, Earth Day has been celebrated by countries all around the world this week. It's a day to actively demonstrate support for the protection of our environment. In Keri, we like to think that every day is Earth Day because we're very proud of our commitment to all things environmental and all things sustainable. We're especially proud of our citizens, citizens who really care about these things, whether it's recycling, composting, saving energy, water conservation, or just going about sprucing up the town on a daily basis. These and other efforts are led by our Citizens Environmental Advisory Board and also by our excellent town staff. And joining us tonight from our staff is Emily Barrett, our Sustainability Manager, Marie Cefalo, our Water Resources Outreach Supervisor, I got that right, I think, and Sarah Justice, our Environmental Programs Outreach Coordinator. I want to thank you and your teams for all that you do. It's magnificent. Thank you. Even though every day is Earth Day in Keri, we are celebrating it specifically this coming Saturday on April 25th in conjunction with our annual Spring Days Festival. And I have a proclamation here that's gonna make that official. So if I may. "Whereas, we are fortunate to live in a region so bountifully endowed with natural assets, and we feel a responsibility to preserve our environment by keeping it clean, healthy, and beautiful. Whereas the Town of Keri has designated April 25th, 2015, as Keri Earth Day 2015, a day on which citizens are particularly encouraged to reflect upon how we can work together to preserve the health of our community by caretaking our environment. Whereas the town is asking citizens, businesses, and organizations to undertake easy actions to caretake birds and pollinators like bees and butterflies, and to certify their yards or outdoor spaces as certified wildlife habitats through the National Wildlife Federation, thereby demonstrating our community's commitment to environmental stewardship. Whereas the Town of Keri on April 25th, 2015, will observe Earth Day 2015 by holding an event in conjunction with Spring Days at Fred Gibbon Metro Park, where there will be informational booths about town programs and services that help preserve and protect the environment. Now therefore, I Ed Yurha, on behalf of Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Keri, and on behalf of the entire Keri Town Council, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2015, as Keri Earth Day 2015, and I encourage all of our citizens to join in the observance of planned events. Proclaim this 21st day of April." Present that to you. Emily or whoever would like to say a few words, it would be great.
Mayor, Council, Happy Earth Day. It's the 45th anniversary of this special day, and I would like to thank Council on behalf of all staff who work on a daily basis to keep Keri clean and forever green. Your leadership on environmental stewardship is so meaningful, and we appreciate your commitment to continuous improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can tell you, from when I became mayor in 2007 till today, there's been such huge increase in the things that you do to make us a greener town. All three of you do so much, and we've come a long ways, and we've become a town that was just barely involved to a town that's leading the state in environmental issues. So thank you very much for all that you do. Please thank your staff as well. We now move to Item 2.3. Sergeant Wyatt Crabtree will present the Patriot Award by the employer's support of the Guard and Reserve.
Good evening. It's a great honor to be here this evening. My name is Bill Patterson. I'm a representative with the North Carolina Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve, simply known as ESGR. ESGR is the United States Department of Defense Office that was established in 1972. The North Carolina Committee of ESGR is led and operated by 84 dedicated volunteers and staff, whose mission it is to gain and maintain employer support for Guard and Reserve service members. We do this by recognizing outstanding support, increasing awareness of the Uniformed Services Employment/Reemployment Rights Act, resolving conflicts through mediation, and developing initiatives to increase employment opportunities for military service members, veterans, and their families. Paramount to ESGR's mission is encouraging employment of guardsmen and reservists who bring integrity, global perspective, and proven leadership to the civilian workforce. One of the ways we recognize outstanding support of service members is the Patriot Award. This award recognizes individual supervisors and bosses nominated by an employee serving in the National Guard or Reserve for support provided directly to the nominating service member. The Patriot Award reflects the efforts made to support citizen warriors through a wide range of measures, including flexible schedules, time off prior to and after deployment, caring for families, and granting leaves of absence if needed. Tonight, ESGR recognized Keri Chief of Police, Pat Bazemore. Chief Bazemore was nominated by Police Sergeant Wyatt Crabtree, who is a chief warrant officer with the United States Coast Guard Reserve. At this time, I would like to ask Sergeant Crabtree to explain briefly while he nominated Chief Bazemore. Sergeant?
Good evening, Council. Anytime an employer employs a guardsman or a reservist, just automatically you're looking at 36 days a year that that person's not going to be available to work. And that's on a standard year with one week in a month, two weeks a year. Since the attacks of 9/11, I've been recalled to duty five times, the shortest of which was 60 days, and the most recent of which was three years. Being away for three years is a very heavy lift for any employer to have to deal with, particularly a law enforcement agency. While I was gone, I knew that I had the support of my employer, of the police department and of the town, everywhere, from training to finance to anything else. I even, there's a policy that we wrote while I was away that looked suspiciously like one from here, that I had a lot to do with writing. So I was able to lean on a lot of the support that I got from here. When I returned, I had to make up three years of in-service training. That's 24 hours at a minimum per year for 2013, 14, and 15. Chief Bazemore directed Lieutenant Jerry McCormick, who guided my schedule every minute of the day. And if you guys know Lieutenant McCormick, that's, it's pretty intense to do. While he was still doing his regular job, he makes sure every second of my day was accounted for, and he got me recertified in a very short amount of time. He handwalked my recertification papers back up to the state, ensured that I was able to get ride-alongs with other sergeants and other officers, and then developed a training program for me after I was recertified so that I would kind of ease back into doing my work. He even let me use some of his equipment until some of mine got back in because they did change some things while I was away. It was an honor to be able to come back with the welcome that I came back to, and I don't think a lot of people experience that when they come back. I think everybody experiences positive things, but not like we get here. And so it was an honor for me to nominate Chief Bazemore and nominate the department for what they did for me.
Thank you, Sergeant. Well, it's obvious from Sergeant Crabtree's nomination that Chief Bazemore and her staff wholeheartedly supported and continue to support Sergeant Crabtree in his role as a warrior for the United States Coast Guard Reserve. But most of all, the Keri Police Department, under the leadership of Chief Bazemore, along with the Town of Keri, the Town Council, are also heroes in support of our military men and women in our National Guard and Reserve. And so we come to the presentation. Chief Bazemore, would you step forward, please? I'd like to read this. "The Office of the Secretary of Defense, employer's support of the Guard and Reserve, recognizes Pat Bazemore, Keri Police Department, as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve force." Congratulations and thank you.
I just want to say thank you very much. This is absolutely an honor, and I accept this on behalf of the entire Town of Keri and the Town Council. Without your support, we could not do what we do to keep our milit-, to support our military people the way we do. The Town of Keri has gone above and beyond, and we really appreciate that. And being gone for three years, when they come back, they always bring something back to the department. Our goal is to always hire and retain the best, and we believe that every time they go away, they come back, they are a little better, and it makes our department better. And because of his three years away, now that he's back, we've decided to put him in training and recruitment so that he can help us recruit more military folks. So thank you very much for your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you to ESGR. And Sergeant Crabtree, it's an honor to have you on our police force, and thank you for serving your country and everything you do for all of us. Thank you very much. We're now at Item 2.4. Our town manager will present the operational update. Mr. Shiger.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we will not have the budget presentation. As I talked with our budget director, Carl Knapp, he indicated that there has been such little change over the past month when we reported, that we didn't feel that was necessary. However, I would like to report on several things regarding downtown, some activities there, some major projects we're going through, some action in the General Assembly that we need to be watching. And I will do that quickly, given the time and what appears to be the length of our meeting this evening. But I would like to update Council just a little bit on our downtown efforts. As many of you noticed, if you just drive down Academy Street, the Maitland Inn is under construction. I noticed today that the roof is going on top of it. It's a private project that we are participating in some measure in, so we don't really know the schedule or the completion date. It appears perhaps in the fall sometime, or perhaps by the end of the year when that may be completed. Also, you may have noticed the Crosstown Pub has opened, which is just a few doors down from the Keri Theater to the east. They actually opened in January, so they have been open for a while and have been doing very well. We also, just next door to the west of the Keri Theater is the Pharmacy Bottle and Beverage, which is a craft beer and wine retail store that also has bars. So that opened up in March, and I understand that they are doing very well, as well as the other concern that had recently opened. I also want to point out, and I think some of you are aware of this, the Innovation Center, that's at the corner of Chatham and Harrison, is experiencing a reboot and a focus on entrepreneurship and innovation. One of the center's first ventures as part of their reboot is the creation of a co-working space in the property that formerly housed the Lucky Pie Gallery. This would be a great complement to an existing co-working space in downtown known as Gather, which opened some months back, two doors down from Ashworth. So we're very excited about that. That's a great use of that space, and we look forward to their success. I also wanted to report on an innovative idea that has come from some downtown merchants as well as residents. It's known as the Downtown Keri Food and Flea, which has been operating. It's at the Ashworth Village Center and is held the second Sunday of each month, and they are having success as well. So that's a great example of our residents and the private sector taking the initiative to create something that brings energy and people to downtown. So we want to support that as much as we can. I also want to mention, we have reported on this earlier, but wanted to point out again, the development of the Co-Founders Capital, a startup which will operate an intense entrepreneurial incubator for predominantly startup companies in the technology area. They'll be providing consulting services to the town, and we have worked an agreement for them to lease some space in the office portion of the Keri Theater. They are up and running, and many of you may have seen news articles in the Triangle Business Journal, the Keri News, as well as other sources about this operation. Would also like, as I mentioned, to talk just a little bit about our legislative agenda, some very quick updates. Some of the activity on our local bills and perhaps some other even statewide bills have, may have slowed down just a little bit because of the crossover date, which is, there've been news articles about that in the paper, which is on April 30th. So there's a focus on bills that need to move to another house to be able to get those over there, and some legislation may be sitting for just a little while until that is completed. The two areas or two bills that I want to mention, the first one is Keri Annexation, which would legislatively annex the Hollybrook subdivision, and that is a request by the homeowners of that subdivision. And I point that out because I see this as a real success story, not only in the council working cooperatively with residents since the dramatic change in our annexation laws, but it's a great example, I think, of what we might look forward to in the future in terms of annexing property where residents desire to be annexed into the city. This happened only a few other times across the state, so I believe we're serving as something of a model for how that can move forward in the future. The second bill, there are actually two bills, in the Senate and the House, but they involve the Town of Keri's request for the release of unneeded easements, which will kind of remove some bureaucracy in that. It would delegate authority to the town manager and provide more timely assistance to landowners who request the release of these easements because they are no longer needed. Council adopted this, requested this from the legislature, and it is, right now, both houses have passed it. This is one of these bills that may be just sitting a while until the crossover date is met, but both House and Senate have passed versions of this bill, so we feel very positive about that. So a special thanks goes to Representatives Dollar, Hall, and Reeves, and our own Gail Adcock, as well as Senators Behringer and Stein for helping us sponsor these bills and working these through the legislature. The other side of the General Assembly is, as you well know, that they are undertaking some things that we haven't really been too happy about, that have impacted significantly our revenues for the Town of Keri, and something I think we need to continue to pay attention to. You're aware that the privileges license tax has been discontinued. That was a $1.5 million hit to our general fund revenue. That was a $1.5 million hit to our general fund revenue. That's a significant hole that we'll have to deal with during our budget process. The thing I would continue to advise council to watch and be cautious about is our bills and suggestions or tweaking of bills that involve the redistribution of the sales tax. It appears to me that even though the original bill introduced quickly got some very negative feedback, and so they're back at the drawing board, but even so, any tweaking of that bill or anything that I think moves forward from that is likely to wind up impacting us in a negative way in terms of revenues. The original bill may have cost us up to $8 million over a three-year period, but that is the version they're back at the drawing board on, and hopefully, things will come out much, much better with some more tweaking to that bill. The best thing to happen would be if they would just drop that altogether, but it does not appear that's going to be the case. So we need to watch that and continue to be in contact with our senators and representatives. I would also like to touch on a few important infrastructure projects and just give you a quick update on those. The Streetscape Improvements, which is on your agenda tonight for approval of the bid, appears on your consent agenda, and so that will move forward just as soon as the council approves that bid. We're happy to report that project came in under estimates, engineering estimates, and the amount of money that we had allocated for that. So we're in very good position with that, and that should move forward very quickly after council action. The Marshville Parkway Extension and NC 540 interchange currently is in design, and we project a completion date of sometime in 2018. Design probably still has—there's probably still about 65% to 70% of design work left to do before they go out for bid. Cary Parkway and High House Road intersection improvements that the council approved some months ago is currently in design, but is close to completing that design work, and we expect a completion date for the entire project to be sometime in the summer or early fall of 2017. The Carpenter Fire Station Road Bridge and Intersection Improvements is in design as well, probably about 50%, and we expect a completion date on that important project, which will grade separate over Highway 55, to be completed in the spring of 2019. The Walnut Street Pedestrian and Traffic Improvements, which is at the US 164 Overpass, if you've been out that way, you've seen the cranes and the crews already working on that project. So construction is underway. It's quite a big project, and is expected to be complete in the fall of 2016. Few others that I'll mention. Fire Station 2, again, under construction. If you ride down East Chatham Street, you will see that project underway. We expect that to be completed in the winter of 2016. I would also like to mention Jack Smith Park, which the council approved some months ago, is under construction, and it has a completion date of fall 2015. I will not go through all the others, but just note that White Oak Creek Greenway to the American Tobacco Trail section is about 50% design. Carpenter Neighborhood Park is under construction, just began. Mills Park Phase 2 is in the early part of design, probably 25% done. Expected completion is summer of 2017. In our downtown park, council will actually see a summary from staff on the—at your next agenda about the park. The bids were not where we would like them to have been, so we have some decisions to make about that and recommendations at the next council meeting for your consideration. The final thing that I would like to do, Mayor, since we did not do any specific updates to our budget outlook for the current year, would like to remind council, as well as the public, about our schedule for the budget review and adoption. My plan is to present the budget to the council at your May 5 meeting, which is your next meeting. On May 19, the Town Council will conduct a budget work session. We will have on May 21 a budget public hearing. And June 11, council budget work session again will occur, and on the same day, at a later time in the evening, at a regular council meeting, will be another budget public hearing. And on June 16, we have scheduled another budget work session if needed. We are anticipating adoption of the budget on June 25 at the council meeting on that date. And Mayor, that completes my report, and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Shiger. Questions from council members? Okay. Thank you. We'll now move to Agenda Item 2.5. It's a settlement and release agreement between the Town of Cary and Fifth Third Bank, and our town attorney, Ms. Simpson, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This matter arose out of Fifth Third Bank's appeal of a Board of Adjustment decision to Superior Court. The judge in Superior Court found in favor of Fifth Third Bank, and the town had questions about that order and its effect on the town, so we appealed that to Court of Appeals. Since then, the parties have agreed as to how to implement that order, and the matter's settled, and the agreement is set forth in the agenda.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda, and if you would like to speak on any item that is not a public hearing, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes for their comments, and speakers, like I said, may speak on anything unless it's a public hearing. There's a three-minute time limit, and I'll have to be fair to all our speakers and adhere to that three-minute time limit. So if I'm interrupting you at the end of three minutes, please immediately stop your comments. There's a green light on the podium. When the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds left. When the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, that means your time is up, and that's when I'll interrupt you, and I appreciate all our speakers and us adhering to our three-minute time limit. We also ask that groups have a spokesperson to speak on behalf of their group and to not have repetitive comments. And I thank everyone in our audience for respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seat, or anything else that might distract from us listening to the speakers or conducting this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite the first speaker to the podium at this time.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor Weinberg and council members. My name is Buket Ayydemir. I am from the American Turkish Association of North Carolina. I was standing here about five years ago, starting our relations, and I wanted to come back here today and give you a very brief report. Since then, we have been organizing Children's Day Festival of Cary, Nazımikmet Poetry Festival here in Cary. Our place is called Turkish House, and it's located on Durham Road, and it is part of the Cary Art Club. We have been hosting several Final Friday exhibits there. In addition, we are hosting poetry and creative writing workshops at that location. In addition, we take pride in participating in many of the community events, such as Spring Days, Lazy Days, Eat Festival, Dragon Festival, Christmas Parade, presentations at schools and so on. We do work with other organizations, as I mentioned, different festivals, but also we have a special relation with Sisters' Association of Cary, which we co-organized the Children's Day Festival of Cary, which I would like to talk about that a little bit. We celebrated that last Saturday, and Mayor Weinberg, your presence was extremely meaningful to us. Your speech reinforced our beliefs that we share the same values, same goals, to serve the Cary community and extended communities throughout North Carolina. This was the third year that we were doing this celebration as a Cary festival, and as the events get stronger, of course, you hear a lot of praise, and you can also hear criticism. Some of them can be constructive, and there might be individuals using that platform to voice their opinion, in some cases maybe on unrelated events. And we may have experienced some of that, but again, we truly believe that it was a proof that we can continue to work together and make this festival even stronger, and we are grateful for your efforts on that front. I also want to mention that through our media coverage, Cary name is going out throughout nationwide in a way, or even overseas, I mentioned that Nazımikmet Poetry Festival, we are organizing the seventh festival this year here at Page Walker. Although it's named after a Turkish poet, every year we honor an international poet, this year we are honoring Russian poet Anna Ahmatova. Festival is this Sunday, 1:00 through 6:00. You are all invited. It's free, open to public, thanks to the Town of Cary's support. Reception starts at 6:00. That's an important time to note. On behalf of American Turkish Association, I would like to thank each and every one of you for enabling us to bring those services to Town of Cary and extended communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Mike Somerville, and I live at 1404 Wackena Road. Here tonight because there are two rezoning cases that you may possibly vote on. The views that I'm stating tonight are my own. They don't have anything to do with the co-applicants, developers, or any of my neighbors on Wackena Road. My wife and I moved with our two children to Cary in 1998 from Fuquay. There were two reasons why we decided to, main one being the school systems, and the second one being so that I could be closer to work and closer to my family. I've sat through several council sessions and continue to hear the repeated theme of Wake County Schools overcrowding issues and the impact to potential new homeowners in the Northwest area. Although this is a hot topic at the moment, by no means is this a new topic. I mean, my kids went to school when we came out here, that was 17 years ago. They were slated to go to Davis Drive. They were bused to the other side of town due to overcrowding to West Cary Middle School. When my kids got to high school, my son graduated from Greenhope High School, my daughter graduated Panther Creek High School. Our address never changed. By the time my daughter was in her sophomore year, she was the first graduating class out of that school, the full four-year. By the time she was in her sophomore year, the second year, that school was filling up with trailers, modulators, everything for the overcrowding. I have a problem understanding why the Town Council is involved in Wake County School Systems affairs. I understand that we're supposed to look out, but I had to do the legwork 17 years ago. We live in an age of information today. I mean, we're an undated with information. I believe that parents/homeowners should be able to make a decision based on the information that's out there. If they don't want to live in a specific area due to overcrowding, then they have options. Everybody has options today. We had an option. We knew that there was going to be overcrowding. We still decided to come because we wanted to be in Cary. In sitting through several of these council sessions, I heard comments, you know, about being good stewards of the community, drawing a line in the sand, several different things. But yet I continue, no matter where I ride on that west side of town, I see apartment complexes, condos, and now we're saying that Wackena Road is the tipping point for all of Northwest Cary? I'm having a hard time understanding that because you just approved Indian Wells. I'm looking at the for-sale signs and the sold houses that are on Wackena for Sedgefield. It's just—imagine the residents of Wackena. My neighbors have been there a long time. I've been there 15 years.
Somerville, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay.
If you have additional comments, if you could leave them with the town clerk, she'll be sure to get them to us.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Hello. My name's Adele Somerville. I also live at 1404 Wackena Road, and this won't be the first time I finish these sentences. Been together a long, long time. As my husband mentioned, we have been there a long time. We've seen several changes. When we first moved to where we live right now, Highway 55 was a two-lane road. You saw traffic from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. when people went into the park. You saw traffic from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. when they came home. On weekends, it was a virtual ghost town. We had an abundance of wildlife. I just saw a turkey the other day. I think those days are dwindling. We see red-tailed hawks, Canadian geese, and deer on a daily basis, but it's all begun to slowly disappear, and that's due to the growth, it's due to the homes, it's due to the building, the trees, everything going. But development was brought to all of us, and it was brought not only by previous Town Councils, but by this one. So, the four property owners named in this request, we came forward and we made application for one reason. It was to ensure that we were not left out of the process from the bigger Wackena Road properties rezoning, as well as to stay in line with the Northwest area plan. We want to ensure that all of our property in this area remain consistent, and again, we did that in response to council's request, that all of this be brought forward together and not piecemeal. Lastly, we want to see this through now so that we would not have to go to battle with future neighbors who haven't even moved here. In closing, we don't stand here before you today as a group of four. We stand here united together with our other 14 neighbors who've been waiting a very, very long time. We stand with them as friends, we stand with the developers, and in closing, we're all in this together, and all we ask is for your support tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Glenda Top—with Glen S. Top and Associates, and I'm here to address one of the items on your agenda tonight for discussion. It's PL 15053. It's the one-year waiting period for the Keller property. The council heard that case, and it was denied on February 12, 2015. We have submitted a request for a waiver of the one-year waiting period to resubmit a rezoning case on the same property. The one-year waiting period can be waived by council for good cause shown. Just briefly, the original request was for 70-town homes with the maximum density of 5.2 dwelling units per acre. As seen in your staff report, the proposal is for 46 detached residential homes with the maximum density of 5.2. Since we turned in that staff report, the number of units has gone down to 43, and the maximum density of that would be 3.21. We do believe that the proposed request and the change in the use and density is a substantial change and does meet the definition of good cause. We feel that the use proposed is compatible with the existing properties, is also compatible with the single-family residential subdivision across the street, Preswick. One final thing, on the land use plan, the density is mediums, 3 to 8. The density that's being proposed right now is at the low end. Again, we feel that the changes are substantial and that we have addressed the issues raised by the neighbors and council, and would ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Glenda Top—with Glen S. Top and Associates, and I'm here to address one of the items on your agenda tonight for discussion. It's PL 15053. It's the one-year waiting period for the Keller property. The council heard that case, and it was denied on February 12, 2015. We have submitted a request for a waiver of the one-year waiting period to resubmit a rezoning case on the same property. The one-year waiting period can be waived by council for good cause shown. Just briefly, the original request was for 70-town homes with the maximum density of 5.2 dwelling units per acre. As seen in your staff report, the proposal is for 46 detached residential homes with the maximum density of 5.2. Since we turned in that staff report, the number of units has gone down to 43, and the maximum density of that would be 3.21. We do believe that the proposed request and the change in the use and density is a substantial change and does meet the definition of good cause. We feel that the use proposed is compatible with the existing properties, is also compatible with the single-family residential subdivision across the street, Preswick. One final thing, on the land use plan, the density is mediums, 3 to 8. The density that's being proposed right now is at the low end. Again, we feel that the changes are substantial and that we have addressed the issues raised by the neighbors and council, and would ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm JW Shan with IDS, and I'm here representing the other Wackena Road Properties case before you tonight. Over two years ago, I began working with these 14 property owners to get the largest cohesive tie of land to bring forth a proposal. We started small, and we grew it, and we got everybody that we could get and reach out to, to join us, to come forward with this request. And we've gone through, you know, probably since early last year, this case has been tracking through three traffic studies and continued to refine it, and then we tabled it in October of last year. may be of concern to the town. And more importantly, one of the things that were brought up previously was the connection on Wakena Road South through to the potential fire track with Marshall Parkway. Since then, this developer buyer has come in and bought an additional two acres in a home on the south side that isn't the direct corridor for that alignment. We did not have that before, and this developer has committed to not only buy that property, but construct that segment that will help get additional access off the rear of Wakena Road. In addition to that, they've worked with Preston Development to get the right-of-way and easement on their property that would be directly adjacent to tie to the northern end of Friar Track. With that said, what that does is, it gives that opportunity to not push that traffic back through Indian Wells intersection. And our traffic studies show that if that connection is made, a 20% overall reduction will happen at that light, once, even when Phillips and Wakena, I mean, excuse me, Phillips and YMCAs built. Furthermore, we've looked at some phasing studies for the property and absorption rates, and someone will address that in a minute. But most importantly, this request is at the minimum density to meet your plan at 3.1 units per acre. And when they're also with this, that 25% of the land is going to be left in open space and stream buffers on the site. We feel that we've tried to do everything to do to get this site in place to meet your plans, and, you know, by requesting an R8, the lots will be a little bit larger than what's in Sedgefield right now. Thank you, we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Josh Swindell-Broger, in charge with Cobblebanker HPW. Longtime listener, first-time caller, thank you for having me. I got a couple of handouts I wanted to give you folks this evening, just to really shine light on the fact that if you choose to vote yes to the Wakena properties case tonight, the 14 REZ08, you're not choosing to make an immediate impact of 130 new homes in the West Cary market immediately. This is a process that's going to take years. To get a good idea of how long, you can turn to the back of page one of the handout I gave you that starts with "Notes, West Cary," and you can see those three lines there on the back of page one. It's going to take years, like I said. But I'm going to start with a timeline, and the timeline begins tonight if the case is approved. Once we get through the rest of the subdivision approval process, the planning, the infrastructure construction of the neighborhood, you're going to be all the way out until July of 2016, when we actually have the first lots to be recorded. And it is a condition of the case that no more than 11 lots will be in that initial recording, as there is currently existing 11 households on the site today, so no impact to the community. I also want to make note at this time, if you look at the timeline there in July, or summer of 2016, is when your next school will open, White Oak Elementary School. Homes of the magnitude that we're talking about here are going to be taking somewhere around six months to build before they're ready for occupancy. So if you look at that absorption study closely, at where we're projecting the Wakena project to be, around two units per month, we will take all the way up until probably the end of 2016 before those 11 homes are even occupied. Now, we begin the additional homes by the next summer, July of 17. That's when we can expect the next homes to start to be absorbed, and at the current absorption rate that we're projecting in this study that you have, and the study is taking the current supply of lots you've already approved and are currently on the ground with the current buyer demand for these price point homes in this location, we will only have four additional properties occupied at that point in time. Now, fast forward ahead a year later, now we're in summer of 2018, we not only have the Green Level High and Austin Ridge Elementary Schools online and open, but we also finally get to that coveted middle school in West Wake County at Apex Friendship that we've been waiting for, only adding an additional 24 homes based on the absorption study you have, for a total of 28 additional homes by the time we get through these four schools that are already let out for construction. Do keep in mind that it is expected that not all of these homes will have school-aged children, only a portion of them will have school-aged children. So I know that that hopefully will have minimal impact as possible on the school system in West Cary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Honored council and mayor, I've spoke to you before, my name is Steve Reese, and I also live at 1721 Wakena Road, so you can guess what I'm going to speak about. There's been a lot of good information passed on to you tonight from the past two gentlemen. I would like, and respectfully, get you to think very hard and read that information. And for the most part, I speak for all the other residents that have been there, I've been there 28 years, some of them have been less, some have been more. But we've been into this for now and two years, and we'd just like for it to get settled down and closed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close, Public Speaks Out. We now move to Agenda Item 4, it's our consent agenda for the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV. I'll take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. Requests to amend the 2015 Town Council meeting calendar. Calling of a public hearing for the following owner-initiated annexations. 1010 Road, West Lake Road, and Appleton, Hartsfield Property. Annexation of property located at 1052 and 1100 Fearsen Road. Weldon Ridge PDD Amendment rezoning, tract SF11 and its consistency and reasonableness statement. Amberly PDD Amendment tracks ONI and VC3 rezoning and consistency and reasonableness statement. Orim property rezoning and its consistency and reasonableness statement. Public notice for consideration of right-of-way closing at 600 Walnut Street. Addition to Traffic Schedule 14, speed limits and to Traffic Schedule 15, speed limits in school zones Turner Creek Road. Abandon a portion of sanitary sewer easement at 4153 Davis Drive and 4137 Piney Gap Drive. Academy Street Improvements bid award and related items. Fiscal year 2015, Street Improvements bid award for Water Main Replacement Project. Are any of these, do council members want any of these pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings portion of our meeting. Public hearings have the same rules as Public Speaks Out with one exception, you now have five minutes to speak instead of three. Our first public hearing is the owner-initiated annexation petition 14A21, Veterinary and Referral Center LLC. The property owners and the town residents may speak at this public hearing. Ms. Grant and of our staff will present this item, we're going to open the public hearing, and council may take action this evening. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request for annexation of approximately 5.35 acres located at 6910 Carpenter Fire Station Road, approximately 740 feet northwest of the NC55 Highway and Carpenter Fire Station Road intersection. The request also includes 0.53 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The property is located inside Cary's ETJ and is currently zoned office and institutional conditional use. The request is associated with the site plan 14SP070, which proposes development of a 14,138-square-foot veterinary hospital. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. This time, I would invite the first, I'll open the public hearing and invite the first speaker forward to the podium. Anyone to speak at Annexation Petition 14A21 Public Hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion to approve Annexation 14A21.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to Item 5.2. It's the owner-initiated annexation petition 15A04, MI Homes of Raleigh LLC. The property owners and town residents may speak at this public hearing. Ms. Grant and of our staff will present the item, we're going to open the public hearing, and council may take action. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. This request is for 54.85 acres located at 6405 Holly Springs Road, east of the Holly Springs Road and southeast Cary Parkway intersection. The property is inside Cary's ETJ, it's currently zoned residential 8 conditional use and residential 12 conditional use. The request is associated with a subdivision plan 14SB031, which proposes a total of 91 lots. This concludes staff's presentation.
Very good. Now's the time for the public hearing for Annexation Petition 15A04, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion to approve Annexation 15A04.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to Item 5.3. It's the owner-initiated annexation petition 15A02, Cameron Reserve LLC. Property owners and town residents may speak at this public hearing. Ms. Grant will once again introduce the item, we'll open the public hearing, and council may take action. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. This request is for annexation of 3.4 acres located at 7225 and 7231 Carpenter Fire Station Road, 170 feet southwest of the Carpenter Fire Station Road and Buxton Grant Drive intersection. The property is located inside Cary's ETJ and is currently zoned residential 40. The request is not associated with a site plan at this time. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Now's the time for the Annexation 15A02 Public Hearing, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Just, yes? Just one comment, and I'll support the annexation, but I just wanted to make this one comment, this property does contain a house that is on our historic inventory. It's not very high on that inventory, it's no great priority associated with the house, but it's there, and it's a good house.
I talked to you about this, you said you were going to drive by and make sure it's still there.
It's still there.
Okay.
Did that this morning.
Okay.
And if the property is developed, which I imagine is why this is coming in as such, the house, of course, will be threatened. And I just wanted to bring that point up, that this happens all the time. When we have a complex rezoning or something that's very controversial, we'll see this, and we'll get to think about it and talk about it and work with the applicant, but we have houses and structures threatened all the time coming in through the back door, if you will, such as this. Now, this house could be threatened, whether it's annexed to Cary or not annexed to Cary, it doesn't matter, which is why I support the rezoning, we might as well annex it. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that things like this occur on a regular basis that we don't always, we're not always aware of.
Okay, very good. Other comments?
No, I'll make a motion to approve Annexation Petition 15A02.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to Item 5.4, Public Hearing for 1010 and West Lake Road Subdivision Rezoning Request. We're going to hear a staff report, allow the applicant to explain the request, we're going to conduct a public hearing. We will not take action on this item tonight, instead, we're going to refer to our advisory board, called the Planning and Zoning Board, and they will make a recommendation which we will see at a later date. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. This request is for property located near the intersection of 1010 Road and West Lake Road, it's east of Law Draker Road. It's an assemblage of parcels that total approximately 55.62 acres. Subject property is shown here in yellow. An aerial view of the subject property shows that large portions of it are vacant and portions are also developed with detached residential homes and agricultural uses. In your staff report, you'll see that there are two structures on the subject property, one at 8301 Law Draker Road, and one at 3640 West Lake Road, which have been inventoried as historic structures. This slide shows you that the site is impacted by a stream buffer according to Cary's GIS maps, and field determination of such features will be required at the time of development plan review. Cary's Parks Recreation and Cultural Facilities Master Plan shows that there is a street-side trail located along 1010 Road, and according to Cary's Transportation Plan, Law Draker Road is identified as a collector road, and 1010 and West Lake Road are identified as major thoroughfares. Cary's Land Use Plan designation is low-density residential. The existing zoning is Wake County zoning R30, and the applicant has proposed residential 12 conditional use. Conditions proposed by the applicant would limit the use to detached residential and neighborhood recreation, would limit the maximum number of dwelling units to 105, and the maximum density of two dwelling units per acre, and that the average lot size be not less than 12,500 square feet. There are also certain traffic mitigations, as suggested by a traffic impact analysis which was required, and those are inventoried in your staff report. Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified by mail of the proposed rezoning, and the property was posted and advertised according to ordinance requirements. Although the property is outside Cary's ETJ and therefore not eligible for a protest petition, we did receive several calls from adjacent property owners, and so we've summarized what those concerns were. The number-one concern that we heard from adjacent property owners was in regard to the lot size. Number, the adjacent parcels are a half acre to two acres in size, and so neighbors were concerned about compatibility with the existing adjacent neighborhoods. There were a few calls about buffers, whether or not a buffer was required. As indicated in your staff report, if you've got two Class II land uses beside each other, a 20-foot landscape area is required, but there is no buffer requirement per the LDO. Citizens were concerned about traffic impacts, wanted more information about the traffic study. They had questions about road access points, which we explained were not determined at this time, those are things that would be developed with a collaboration with DOT and discussions with them. And then there were also opportunities, questions asked about opportunities from some adjacent property owners about whether or not they could tie into town utilities if this property was developed with water and sewer. So we explained the annexation process, you know, to those folks as well. So there was support and concern, and I'm sure you'll hear from both sides of that tonight during the public hearing. At this time, I'd like to call upon the applicant, and then following the public hearing, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you. Will the applicant please come forward?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bruce Herbert, I live at 227 Strathburg Lane here in Cary. I'm with Reliable, which is under the same ownership as Royal Oaks Building Group. We're a local privately-owned company, we've built in several triangle communities, including Peninsula and Amberly and Laurel Crossing, which most of you might be familiar with, it's the old way station on Old Apex Road. I'm sorry, I need to give you this. We're excited to be here tonight. We'd like to develop high-quality, low-density residential immunity at the intersection of 1010 and West Lake Road. This property has been in the Sellers family for years, the owners have lived on this land most of their lives. They've seen the area develop over the years, and now would like the opportunity to do the same, so they can move into a setting that better suits their lives. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so I'll be brief, but I wanted to make four points. First, we're consistent with the land use plan. As Deborah mentioned, the property is zoned in the county and designated as low-density residential per the Cary land use plan. As noted in the staff report, we've offered a condition that provides a maximum of two dwellings, dwelling units per acre. of two dwellings, dwelling units per acre. As a result, we're completely consistent with the town's land use plan, which calls for development of one to three units per acre on this property. Second, we're consistent with the town's ongoing conversation related to appropriate lot sizes and low-density residential zonings. This zoning is for R-12. Thus, the maximum size of any lot is 12,000 square, I mean, the minimum size of any lot is 12,000 square feet. I'm familiar with the conversations that council has had with respect to lot sizes and low-density zoning cases, and I understand there's a text change that went to public hearing and has been referred to a work session. This zoning is consistent with the spirit of those conversations in that it provides for a minimum of 12,000 square foot lots. Third, we understand that there are folks in the community that are not happy with the fact that our development will be interconnected with theirs, and we're sympathetic to that. The communities to our south and west have been developed in the county. As the council's aware, the town's ordinance require these connections, so we're going along with those connections. Whether this property is developed by us or someone else, the interconnections will be mandated by town ordinances. Finally, in our diligence on the property, we discovered the old farmhouse that's noted in your staff report, and we've been in contact with Capital Area Preservation, and we'll be working with them to gauge their desire for the house. In closing, I just want to say that we appreciate the cooperation, advice, and effort that the town staff has given us in aiding us through the supplemental process of this annexation and zoning request. Again, we're excited about this community and to continue working in the town. As a local developer, we pride ourselves in quality. We will build a quality community on this property. I thank you for your time tonight and respectfully request the council's support of the case. We're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing of the Westlake Road subdivision rezoning 15REZO3, and I would invite the first speaker forward at this time.
Good evening. My name is Patty Scardino, and I am one of the property owners that's adjacent to this property. Our neighbors, several of us have met together, and we've consolidated all our concerns and comments. Some of these are changes we would like to see. Many of these are just questions, and we don't understand how this process works or what's going to happen in certain areas. First of all, I want you to understand that we know the development is going to happen, and we're not against it. We just want to ensure that it is consistent with our neighborhoods and that everything blends together. Two of the issues that we would like to see addressed is the lot size is one of them. Our lots are R-30, and they want to put in R-12, which would make some of us have up to three new neighbors, if not more. My property is one of those that would end up with at least three new neighbors. So we would like to see possibly having larger lots that are adjacent to our lots. If they want to have smaller lots on the corner of 1010 and Westlake or in the interior of the subdivision, that's fine, but we would like to see larger lots that are adjacent to ours. Secondly, the buffering was a concern. And part of the concern is that some of us have landscaped our properties, and we want to make sure that our landscape is not damaged, that there's no erosion. There are a lot of mature trees in there, and we don't want to lose any of that buffering. So we want to make sure there's no clear cutting of any of the buffering that is in there. And then we wanted to understand who's responsible for maintaining that buffer. Is it going to be each individual lot owner? And how are they going to be notified of it? We don't know if there's going to be covenants or homeowners association in this area, and maybe that can be addressed in those. But these are just questions that we have. Other things that we're concerned about is how is this property going to be connected to the town of Cary sewer? Previously, Cary had attempted to put in a sewer line through the low-lying creek that's in this property, and that got moved onto Law Draker Road. So if they're going to, the developer did mention that he might be putting the sewer line through that creek. So there are several property owners who would lose some of their property rights if that sewer line is put through that creek. There is concern about water runoff. There is a lot of slopes up and down in this property. Some owners, myself included, have landscaped our property to manage the water flow that comes off of areas, and we want to make sure that the water flow doesn't get increased or the stormwater changes its patterns, because I, for one, have put in a bunch of effort to control the water. In the plan that was submitted, the traffic report included a lot layout of this area that included stormwater ponds. We would like to understand, are those permanent? If they are permanent, who's maintaining it? Are there going to be protection for, you know, making sure children don't get near that water? And then there's wildlife concerns. Anytime there's a pond, mosquitoes and snakes are a big concern. Another area that is concerned is about wetlands. We do know of one area of this property that in wet times, that it does flood and it does retain water, and then it drains out. So I don't know if there's been any work on determining if there's wetlands in that area. Another area, again, about the clear cutting of the lots. You know, we don't want to lose all of the trees that are in there. And the developer did mention that, but we want to make sure that this area isn't just clear cut. There's a lot of areas labeled as open space, and we wanted to understand who's going to maintain that? How is it going to be maintained? Is there going to be parks in there or trails in there? Again, that might be part of a homeowners association or covenants, we're not sure. Traffic is another big concern. Coming out of Law Draker Road, trying to make a left onto 1010 during commute hours or any of the other connector streets is hard at times. So if we add in a bunch more houses and a bunch more people in there, the traffic will get worse. Commute time is bad, but then also on the weekends when Crowder Park has activities, there is a lot of traffic there. In fact, last weekend, there was a major accident right in front of Crowder Park because of all the traffic. I can stop now and hand it off to the next person who will continue my notes.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jomian Gino. Good evening, mayor, council members. Continuing these collective issues of residents, I'm an adjoining property owner. The eighth point here is regarding the South Point Drive, which is a road that's within the area now being considered for development. There's regular maintenance due to the low-lying areas above the, there's a stream that runs next to and adjacent to this that causes a reoccurring situation with water and road deterioration. So adding additional houses, cars will cause more traffic to drive along this route, causing deterioration to the road. And of course, the reoccurring road damage. How will this be maintained going forward? Will there be responsibilities of the property? Will the state be, will this be a state road? So there's concerns from the neighbors in that area about this reoccurring condition with the road. That's the end of the issues. So in conclusion, to just show our representation here tonight of those who would want to stand, the adjoining property owners in support of these issues that we've gone over, hopefully this made the process efficient for you guys. We'd also like to say that, you know, we are not against this development. Again, to reiterate that, we just want the development to blend with our beautiful rural neighborhoods that have been there, and we all appreciate those. And we would like to thank the mayor and town council for listening to us tonight, and we'll look to see the responses going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Michael Karen. I live at 3616 Westlake Road. I represent a number of the sellers of the property. My wife's family has lived here for generations. Property was once thriving farmland and was an integral part of the community. Over the years, the area has grown up, as you well know. Many of the large tracts of farmland surrounding the area have been sold away, and subdivisions have been developed, like Churchill Estates, Jamison Park, and the park at Westlake. Rising property taxes on large pieces of unused land have become prohibitive to keep. Not long ago, the town of Cary wanted to annex the property anyway. My mother-in-law, now on a fixed income and a widow since 1992, struggles with ways to pay the increasing taxes on the land. Collectively, we see this as an opportunity to make good use of this property and to secure a more comfortable retirement for those who have given so much to the community. We feel that Royal Oaks is bringing you a solid plan for use of this property and is in keeping with the high value of the area of the community. And I just want to thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Council mail. I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen, everybody. My name's Brett Sharp. I reside at 3513 South Point Drive. And I don't want to reiterate a lot of the concerns that we've already mentioned, and I do indicate that, you know, they are shared among everybody there. My two main concerns that I'd like to address are both road access and traffic, which were indicated before. Currently, the traffic study indicates there's two access points, one on Westlake and one on Law Draker. There is the portion of the road on South Point Drive, which does look like they will be connecting to that. However, as a property owner there with young children, and I can kind of mirror the thoughts of my neighbors, that if we can somehow alleviate the connection on South Point Drive to this neighborhood, it would allow us to maintain our own neighborhood, our own lifestyle, without being connected to this area and increasing the traffic down South Point Drive, which, as was previously noted, is in kind of a state of disrepair at times. My second concern is with the traffic study and the connection at Law Draker and 1010 Road. It indicates in there there's going to be a widening of 1010 Road, additional lanes put in. However, both my personal and my professional experience, I worked for a large insurance company dealing with auto accidents, overseeing a claims organization for a large portion of North Carolina. And I can indicate to you guys that without putting a traffic signal at the intersection of 1010 and Law Draker Road with the increase in traffic, there will be accidents there, and it's something that we need to be proactive versus reactive in addressing. It indicates in the traffic study that the intersection is projected to continue failing, so I just hope that this is taken into account when the traffic plan is ultimately decided on. So basically, I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. I'm going to reiterate some of the things that were said.
Give us your name, please.
Lisa Adamson, I'm sorry. I live on Summer Oaks Drive. And our last speaker mentioned the connection on South Point to the new development, which I also am opposed to for the reasons he gave. We have our own neighborhood. We have a large lots. It's a very quiet neighborhood, it's very treed. And I think by connecting it to the new area, it's going to change the flavor of our neighborhood. I can see now cars coming out that way, taking a shortcut, coming through South Point Drive, which is, the road is practically all broken up, and as is Law Draker. I mean, no one has done anything about fixing these roads. And even though it's only 105 homes, it's 105 homes with I don't know how many people, you know, children, sometimes there'd be teenage drivers, there'd be visitors. It's going to be a lot more traffic than just the residents there. And the mention of a traffic light on Law Draker, we have needed that there for a long time. I've been through this in another development where I lived, and there's a lot of petition about putting a light in. It wasn't until there was a fatal accident that the town finally put a light in there. And then what they did is they put a light that worked only during the busiest times. Other times, it just flashed. So it was like a warning light, so no one had to stop unless there was traffic coming. But during the peak hours, it was a working traffic light. And there were no more traffic jams. There used to be a backup of over a mile at that particular intersection to make that left turn. It's similar to what's happening on Law Draker. I no longer go to work every morning, but when I did, it was a nightmare. So I would go around and go through Westlake, which is a bit longer, and that's also a very busy street. During the peak hours, there's lots of traffic coming down there for people bringing their kids to school. I mean, I'm not against the development. I think it's great. And I don't care if Cary becomes a part of the surrounding area. That's fine to me. I don't really want to be a part of Cary, but I don't care if my neighbors aren't Cary. I just don't want to see my neighborhood changed. You know, I came here to be in this particular neighborhood. I sought out this neighborhood for years, waiting for a home to become available. And even though I am not on the side of the street that will have homes behind me, it's going to impact my view, and I don't want a whole bunch of people driving down my street. I live on a dead-end street. Most of the people who drive there live in that street. It's basically a quiet neighborhood, and I want to keep it that way. And I'd be nice to have neighbors, but I don't want them, you know, in my face. So I would like not to connect South Point Drive and put a light on the Law Draker, and don't wait till someone gets killed. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Excuse me. My name's Tara Pegram. I live at 3216 Summer Oaks Drive. I'm actually at the intersection of South Point and Summer Oaks, where the Stub Road is. So this road issue is particularly close to me and where I live. I had prepared a statement, but the group statement, a lot of that pertains to what I was going to say. I actually, and my husband grew up in Cary. We lived there, he's lived here his whole life, actually. I lived here since I was nine, so I understand all the conveniences of being a resident and the draw to the area. We couldn't find the type of lifestyle that we wanted within the city limits of Cary, so we sought this neighborhood to have our children, two young boys, and to have a sort of quieter, little bit more space and privacy to have them grow up in and have a little bit more intimate type of setting of a neighborhood, a smaller group. I don't have a problem with the development going in. I think Cary has a lot to offer in terms of conveniences. But I do have an issue with the density and specifically the depth of the lots. Having a 20-foot landscape buffer with only a 25-foot setback from the back of the house doesn't really allow for a lot of room to retain that sort of private intimate feeling. And as a Cary resident moving to this part of the county, I would think that these people would be looking for a similar type of lifestyle to what my husband and I were looking for in this area, you know, willing to drive a little farther for the conveniences of the actual city of Cary, town of Cary, you know, while still being close to Raleigh and things. So I think that doing something with regards to the plan to make it more conducive and more similar to the neighborhoods that directly connect, like mine, where there's actually a road that is currently potentially going to connect, and then all the other adjacent properties that are at least three-quarters of an acre, if not bigger, in many instances. I just think that the Cary residents would be much happier living in a neighborhood that actually feels like it fits in the environment that it's being put in, whereas the proposed plan and the site plans, while I know you all haven't necessarily reviewed those yet, we've seen tentative sketches. It's like a, it's like a different, a whole different world is going to be plopped into a space where it's surrounded by people who are living, you know, wanted sort of a different kind of lifestyle. There's also no sidewalks in any of these neighborhoods that are joined. There's no sidewalks on Law Draker. That particular road is used to access Crowder District Park, which is a draw for families and probably a draw for people who live in Cary. I use that road. I know my husband walks along that road all the time to go to Crowder District Park. So the, any reduction in density, hence reduction in traffic, will just increase the safety of our roads for our children, who are going to be playing and making friends with kids in the new neighborhood and using those roads to access Crowder District Park. I used to ride my bike to, you know, to the grocery store, to Goodberry's. I used to, you know, ride to my friend's house. I used to, you know, ride to my friends' houses. That's not the kind of lifestyle that we have in this part of the county, because there are no roads that go up to the corner store. There are no roads that, you know, are sidewalks to go up to the corner store. There's no sidewalks to go to the park. So we just have to keep it low, actually low density, so that we can still have safety for our kids who can still go out and play and feel that way. So I just want you all to take that in consideration whenever you're reviewing this proposal. There's one other thing with the stormwater ponds. Just for safety, I don't know what requirements Cary has in planning the development, but there are a number of stormwater ponds that would have to be put on this property because of all the runoff and streams. So whatever considerations for aesthetics and then also safety for children, I would like you all to consider when you do get around to reviewing those plans, making sure that they don't, you know, detract from that natural beauty that we currently have in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next speaker, please.
I'm here because hope springs eternal.
Could you give us your name, please?
Okay, Jim English.
Thank you.
I lived in Cary for 21 years. I happened to move here when our mayor pro tem was leading the fight against Amberwood Apartments, to move them to the other side of the road because they didn't fit properly with the rest of the area. And we have a, an ex-urban environment, if you will, very close in. We have nothing against these developers. I think what they're trying to do is quite good. It is that feel that we would like to retain. And if you guys can help with that and maybe come up with some creative solutions, like, you know, perhaps instead of a landscape, maybe outside of the perimeter of the property, we look at greenways. So there's a greenway trail that goes through that would provide more space in a natural area, instead of looking at landscape buffers and all that could be maintained by that development. Just try to be creative, if you would, and even though we're not Cary residents, although I do own property in Cary, we would like to have your consideration as county residents and, you know, people that will share the space. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Kyle Pegram. You heard from my wife Tara a little while ago. I was born and raised in Cary, in a little town, in a little neighborhood called Prestonwood, back when the closest grocery store was Buffalo Lanes, all the way down, all the way down the train tracks. You pass about five grocery stores on the way there now, so I understand Cary's growing. I don't think anyone here is trying to stand, stay in the way of that. But growing up in Preston, you know, I had a golf course to go play on and tennis courts and pools and all that, and that's not going to be provided with this new subdivision. It just won't. So, you know, even with all those, you know, outlets for me to play and have fun, I still could take sidewalks and walk to Bond Park and things like that. And that was really key because I didn't have to get all the utility and the value out of being a resident of Cary at my property. But the truth of the matter is, this subdivision doesn't tie in anywhere, so there's just simply sidewalks to nowhere and bike lanes to nowhere. And it kind of just makes me think that if we could address the rezoning to an R12 to maybe something like an R20 that's a little bit more in line with the surrounding neighborhood, it would allow the new Cary residents to get more utility out of their land. Like my wife previously mentioned, 25 feet off the back of a house is all that your yard is. That's probably about from here to that wall back there. That's not a lot of land that allows you to get a lot of utility out of your property. So I would just ask that, you know, the council consider this in the rezoning and maybe allow for a slightly larger lot size so that the kids who grow up there can get all the benefits that I got without having to depend on the surrounding community to develop around what exists. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Douglas Mendetti, and I am a resident of Wedgewood Square, which is on Charles, which is on the upper side of the property proposed. I did have a few items to cover tonight, but my neighbors that came before me have covered a good portion of them. One of my biggest concerns, as others have mentioned, has been the corner of the traffic between 1010 and Laodraker, and I agree with my neighbors that we do need to look at a light there. There have been accidents at that corner due to visual coming up from the Crowder Park side. This last weekend, I was unaware of it because I was away, that there was actually an accident there at Crowder Park. So that particular area is a fairly fast-moving area, even though it is a speed limit of 45. It is a dangerous area. For the neighbors and myself that like to enjoy the park, we have to walk there up our street to Laodraker, which does not have sidewalks. And if we add additional traffic to that, it's a danger to ourselves, our children, and of course, the new neighbors that would be moving in to this site. We welcome them. We'd like to see them come in, but we want to protect all of us. That's one of my main concerns. The other concern that really wasn't addressed was the construction traffic. And that particular road of Laodraker is an old road. The question we have is, construction traffic is extremely heavy. Is that road actually deemed to handle the loads of construction equipment on that particular area? It's already falling apart. It's already coming apart, and it's just patched up after every winter during the particular timeframe. The addition of those trucks will probably tear that road up. We like to, I'd like to put a request in that construction actually unfortunately come through Westlake, which is a fairly new road, which could handle that. And also, the addition of the trucks coming down Laodraker would be another safety issue for the residents on that particular road. It's not as wide. It doesn't have the sidewalks and doesn't have the protection. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Going to close the public hearing now and open it up to council. Before I do, Ms. Granon, I'd like to know, first of all, thank you all for being here and for not repeating your comments and for being very respectful. We really appreciate that. It helps us focus on exactly what you're saying. There's a lot of confusion between what's discussed or what's a decision at site plan, what's a decision at rezoning, and I think these people could benefit from a meeting, and I don't know if there's one set up. Who could be a staff contact that they can set up time with to get questions answered? Okay, so you would be the contact. And I just want to touch on some of the things that I've heard, and I wrote down about 20 things. Traffic signals, for one. The criteria has to be met before DOT will allow. It's not a Cary decision. It's a DOT decision, not Cary. Connectivity is a site plan, not a rezoning. What we're basically doing is deciding, is this the type of use we want to have here? Is this the type of density we want to have here? And we can't legally, we get in trouble legally if we discuss other things. And another thing I heard was, can you do this? Can you do that? We cannot propose to the developer. They have to propose to us. Again, if we try that, we get in trouble legally. That's why she sits at the end of the table. She slaps her hands when we do things wrong. There's all kinds of things like this, and I understand the confusion. I totally do. If this is your first time dealing with it, you have all these issues. You don't know where they belong and what slot. And so I think you would benefit from a meeting with staff members, and I think our staff is open to that. Other things I heard that I would like to know, sewer line location, would they be coming off Westlake or would they be coming the other?
Once again, that, that's something, right. We haven't seen the plan for that at this time.
And retention ponds in general, we're required to make things as good or better.
We have, right, in terms of stormwater management, right.
So, and that would be maintained by the property owner, which would be enforced by the town.
That, what would?
So if they build a subdivision, it's the property owner that's responsible, homeowner association or whoever, and then it's the town's job to enforce it if they don't do it. So that question was asked. Creek buffers, we have 50, 100-foot for constant flowing streams and 50-foot for intermittent streams. Wetlands are protected. Clear cuttings not allowed. Trying to think all the other ones that were asked.
There was some questions about somebody's private property rights with the extension of a sewer line, and we referred that individual to our utility engineers so that they could better understand easements and what the process is with that, so.
And then the requests you have about lot sizes, that's something to take to the developer. We have what, we have a master plan called a land use plan, and in that plan, it says low density, and low density in an urban environment means one to three units an acre. And so he's proposing one to three units an acre. And the reason he's actually here is because he has a holding zoning or a county zoning that's got to be converted to an urban zoning, and that's why he's here. Otherwise, we wouldn't see it. We won't see the site plan issue. We're just talking about the type. So again, that thing, that is difficult to understand if you've never dealt with it, and I just want to make sure people understand that. And before I shut up, which I probably should, I want to make sure everyone understands the process. This is the public hearing. So next, it goes to an advisory board of citizens where they review this and make a recommendation. In between now and that time, if the developer changes anything, there'll be another public hearing at that advisory board meeting. And so you'll have an opportunity to express your thoughts about the changes proposed by the developer at that time. Once the advisory board makes a decision, it will come back to council for a vote. If nothing changes between now and the advisory board and the time it comes back, we're talking probably two to three months, two minimum. If things change, it's longer. So that's the timeline you're looking at as well. And I'm trying to put all this out there. I'm not trying to be condescending or anything. I'm just trying to give you some information to work with. And please contact Ms. Granon. She's responsive. She'll answer your questions, and if you want to have a group meeting, I'm sure she'll work with you. And with that, I'm going to be quiet now and open up to my colleagues. Any, anything? Mr. Yar.
You covered just about everything there, mayor. You had good notes. That was, that was great. The one thing you didn't mention was the house.
Oh, that's right.
So I, not to disappoint anyone, I thought I would. Mrs. Granon mentioned two houses, and Mr. Herbert focused on one in his comment, and that's the one that really needs the focus, is the older of those two houses. As you know, when you all approved historic preservation master plan several years ago, first thing we did was conduct an inventory of possible historic properties, and there's hundreds and hundreds of properties on that list. The inventory wasn't completed. We ran out of money, and they completed the second piece of it just in September of this past year. And it was at our Historic Preservation Commission meeting about 10 days ago that they presented to us the final copy of the inventory. And on the last page of that inventory, and this contains hundreds of properties, on the last page of the inventory, there's a list of, it's not even quite a page long, and right here is that house. And this is entitled "Study List Recommendations," which means our consultant felt that these properties here, and most of them are well-known to us. This house isn't because, in all honesty, I don't think we travel Laodraker Road very often in our daily travels. But this list is a study list, a recommended study list for the National Historic Register. In other words, it's something to get on the register. It has to first be on a study list, and these are the houses that our consultant recommended to be part of that list. So unlike the house I talked about earlier, which really was not a priority, this one has a great priority attached to it. So all I can say is I'm very happy to hear Mr. Herbert has been working with capital area preservation, and I would hope as you all continue to address the concerns that we heard tonight of the nearby residents and all these other things, that you also continue to work on the preservation of that house on Laodraker Road.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Okay. This, as I said, will go to advisory board. Do we have any timeline? I know you hate giving timeline, but so many people.
It depends on what the applicant wants to do. We'll have it updated on our website soon, but it depends on whether or not there's any changes to the condition.
So townofcary.org, and they just search for this rezoning number, and it'll pop right up.
Yeah, we're targeting June if there's no changes. It, you know, has the potential of being June, even if they have a second public hearing, but we'll have it on the website as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Granon, and thank you all again for being here. We now move to 5.5 Public Hearing for Economic Development Initiative. Ms. Hi of our staff will present this item, and then we'll open the public hearing, and council may take action. Ms. Hi.
Good evening. This public hearing provides an opportunity for interested persons to present their views regarding an economic development grant from the town of Cary to a company should they decide to locate a headquarters facility within the corporate limits of the town of Cary. This project is expected to help stimulate the local economy through a $1.3 million capital investment in real and personal property and through the creation of at least 47 new permanent jobs with an average annual salary of approximately $85,000. Under the proposed economic development contract, the town would make a $23,500 grant to the company, and this funding would match the state's 1NC funding. The proposed contract will specify payback provisions should the capital investment or job creation not materialize or not be maintained throughout the performance period. Following the public hearing, council may take action. And with that, I'll turn it back to you to begin the public hearing.
Very good. Now's the time for the Public Hearing for Economic Development Initiative, TM 15014, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? See, no one. I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
And the second discussion.
Yeah. I will not be supporting the motion to approve this one. I don't know that a financial grant from the town is necessary to a foreign company looking to relocate from New York.
Okay. Other comments? All in faith of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. Thank you, Ms. Hi.
Thank you.
We're now going to move into the discussion items. I'm going to look at my colleagues. Do we need a quick break before we go into the long stretch of discussion items? Are we good?
We can do this one first.
All right. Do this one first and then a break?
I think the two are kind of similar, aren't they?
All right, yeah, we'll do the first two, and then we'll take a break. All right, the first one is our discussion item, general fund balance policy. Ms. Mills will present the item, and council may take action.
Good evening, council. As you recall from our finance and capital budget work session in October 2014, we discussed fund balance policy and the prudent use of excess fund balance. We discussed the accounting components of fund balance, and we presented you with a stacked bar graph that reflected fund balance in components of red, green, and yellow. And if you recall, fund balance shown as red was that fund balance that was restricted by the state or as its source, and generally reflects about two months of Cary's general fund annual expenditures. The yellow fund balance part of that stacked bar represented dollars that are accessible to council but have been set aside as a minimum by council policy. In the past, that policy has been set as four months' worth of general fund annual expenditures. Green fund balance represented fund balance that is available to council in excess of your minimum policy for use on special projects. We discussed that the town's minimum fund balance, which together is about six months' worth of expenditures, could be reduced without risk to the town's AAA bond ratings. Council directed staff to update the policy to require about five months of expenditures made up of three months of general fund balance, general fund expenditures and accessible fund balance, the yellow money part of that stacked bar, so that total fund balance policy minimum would represent about five months' worth of general fund expenditures. Reducing this policy minimum does not spend or change the amount of fund balance, but creates about $11 million more capacity in excess funds for council appropriations for one-time needs and priorities. The proposed policy for you tonight spells out more detail about the calculation of those ratios, fund balance minimums, the prudent use of excess fund balance, in terms of both type of expenditures and the timing of the use of that fund balance. Since fund balance is a limited resource, it should best be evaluated against all competing priorities at budget time. And the proposed policy documents our current practice to use mid-year appropriations carefully to meet unanticipated capital or operating needs. The policy does propose that if council ever has to choose to use fund balance below the minimum level, for example, due to a has to choose to use fund balance below the minimum level, for example, due to a disaster, that it would be done so in conjunction with a plan to cut expenditures and restore fund balance to minimum levels within one to three years. Currently, fund balance is very briefly addressed in our current town finance policy. Staff recommends that we delete the references to fund balance in existing finance policy 112 and establish the new separate policy as presented. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Comments? Questions?
Question I have. Total fund balance shall be at least 15%, which is approximately five months of budgeted general fund expenditures. And that is the total of non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balance. If we can't spend the non-spendable, restricted is already proposed, it's already-
Untouchable.
Yes. Committed is already untouchable. The only two that aren't are assigned and unassigned. Why do we even have that statement as part of the policy?
So the components that you listed are accounting definitions, and those can be different from budgeting definitions. The committed fund balance you could appropriate, but in a conservative stance, we recommend that you consider that part of your restricted balance. Available fund balance is a technical term, and so we've recommended that we use accessible fund balance. It is accessible to you, although we recommend that you set the policy and then only use money in excess of your policy limits on accessible fund balance.
I get the accessible part, even though I may not agree with it, but I get it. The total fund balance part was just a little, I don't want to say the word misleading, but confusing, I guess, to me in some ways. We talked about this in great length at our little mini retreat back at the soccer center, and if I remember correctly, I did not support this at that time. I understand all the how-coms and why-fours, and how bond rating agencies and folks look at things and kind of look at things a little differently than I do. At the end of the day, for me, I would just rather know what we're getting ready to spend the money on before we say, yes, it's okay to spend it. And so that's just kind of where I'm coming from. I do appreciate all the work that you guys have done, the reasons and how-coms, why-fours. It just feels foreign to me.
Well, one thing I would like to comment on that, and one thing I would like to say, I don't view this change as giving us the ability to start spending money. I think it's an opportunity to review instead of taking on more debt. We can use cash instead of debt if the opportunity is beneficial to us. I don't see it at all, and I'm not going to support at all spending general fund balance on stuff. So I'm actually agreeing with you. I know it doesn't sound like it, but.
I think one of the points that we were discussing in October was that if you ever want to use more than your current policy, if you want to lower the policy, it's better to do it without an impending appropriation, so that you do it as a clear policy measure and not as rating the cookie jar for something special that comes along later, so that you decide what's available.
And that's a fair point. And I don't entirely disagree with that. I just also feel like if there was something worthy of us going into our fund balance to fund, that they'd come before council, we'd debate it, and decide to fund it or don't fund it. So I know the bond rating agencies might not, they'd rather see the policy, but I don't know.
But it will come before us, right?
It would come before you. And you have 30 million, over 30 million in, you know, excess fund balance now, so this would increase that. So I don't see council spending down to that level anytime in the foreseeable future, just that it gives you the option in the future to do so without pressure to change the policy then.
So for people that are watching that may not, and they certainly weren't at the Wake Med Soccer Program when we saw all the pretty bars and graphs, but it doesn't change our fund balance.
Correct.
It just allows us to be more flexible and have accessibility to some of these monies by setting up a policy. But any change in any expenditure still has to come through council.
Absolutely. You make fund balance appropriation decisions at budget, and then with any council, it requires council appropriation to use it.
When we talked about this in October, I had pretty great reservations about doing this change and drawing down that percentage, or that, you know, the number of months of reserve that we could have. I like the language that you put in here that would set the standard for why, you know, when we pull this money out, and I feel better knowing that the council would be voting on this. So I think I can come around and support it.
Other comments? Okay. I'd entertain a motion. I don't think I got a motion yet.
I don't want to make the motion, though. But I don't want to be out in front.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Discussion, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. Thank you, Ms. Mills. We now move to item 6.2. It's the debt management policy. Once again, Ms. Mills will present.
Thank you. At the same time that we have been discussing financial policy, we've discussed debt policy in regards to debt capacity. And in the past, council set debt service limits as a target rather than a firm policy limit to maintain flexibility. For the general fund, that target limit was set as a ratio of debt service to general fund expenditures as 15%, but never more than 20%. Since then, council has easily maintained spending decisions that contain debt service to 15% of budgeted general fund expenditures. Staff recommends that council formalize this general fund spending policy for debt, which sets 15% as a limit, but like the fund balance policy, also sets an upper limit of 20% for extraordinary situations. The proposed policy also clarifies definitions and adds formal policy ratios for the utility fund as well. In the utility fund, debt service capacity is measured by analysts as a, by a coverage ratio. For example, our current bond covenants require utility net revenues after operating expenditures to be available for debt service at 1.2 times our revenue bond debt service and at least equal to our total debt service, so at least break even. Consistent with Cary practices, staff recommends that we set utility coverage ratios that are more conservative than the minimum. This policy would be a positive factor in future bond ratings to support maintaining our current AAA ratings. Staff recommends a coverage ratio for the utility fund of 1.4 times for the revenue bond debt service and a coverage policy ratio of 1.1 for total utility debt service. Existing debt practices in regards to refinancing, terms, ratings, and disclosure remains the same but are spelled out in more detail in the proposed policy. Like the fund balance policy, debt is briefly covered in finance policy 112, and staff recommends deleting the debt-related text in 112 and establishing a new debt policy as proposed.
Ms. Mills, I'm going to try to rephrase what I think I understand, and that might be, might not be a good thing, the way I under, well, I'm saying that all wrong. Anyway, not going to change anything. We're going to take our targets and make them policies and strengthen our financial position with bond agencies?
Yes, they look for policies. Firms set council policy rather than just targets.
Okay.
I support that.
Good. I understood that correctly. Other comments? Questions?
This one I have no problem with. Just policy to reinforce our existing practice.
You want to second my motion?
I am the second to your motion, Jack.
You have a motion and a second. I just want to say that I think one of the main reasons we never came close to our target was because of you and Mr. Shiber. You're very conservative in the way you practice, and you keep us conservative as well, which I very much appreciate, so.
Thank you. There's a lot of work in the budget office that goes on as well to manage those and give you choices.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Thank you.
How's council doing? We ready for a quick break?
Yeah.
All right, five-minute break, and we'll be right back.
And we'll be right back.
We'll reconvene our council meeting at this time, and we'll move to our next discussion item. It's item 6.3, the Land Development Ordinance Text Amendments for Round 30. Staff is going to give us a report. We're going to hear from our planning board and their recommendations, and we may take action on this item this evening. This item requires a simple majority vote to approve. Ms. Spearman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. These are the Round 30 Land Development Ordinance Amendments. This is a list of all of the Round 30 items. First, we had some revised standards that would be applicable in the infill sub-district of the Walnut Street corridor. There were revisions to establish potential locations and development standards for electronic gaming or Internet sweepstakes operations and machines. We also had some language to clarify provisions related to plan consistency when considering rezoning requests. Item D included changes related to cumulative impacts of traffic and when considering rezoning cases. Item E included several changes related to signage. There were also several changes related to standards for specific uses or where certain specific uses may be located. Item G included expanding the applicability of the minor modification process where that is applicable. And finally, item H, that includes a number of minor and technical amendments. A public hearing was held on all of these items before this board, or council, on January 28. There was considerable discussion at the public hearing and also discussion by the Planning and Zoning Board. Several of the items were revised with some, based on the concerns that were expressed both at the public hearing and by the Planning and Zoning Board. The specific changes that were made are included, described in your staff report. Staff does recommend approval of the, all of these amendments. And Al Swanstrom will present the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board. Following Mr. Swanstrom's presentation, staff will be available for questions.
Very good. Mr. Swanstrom? Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm going to be a little confusing in discussing this because I'm going to do item A last, because it's the one we had the greatest amount of discussion on, and so I thought I'd take the tough one last. Items B, C, E, F, G, and H, the record indicates that we voted eight to one, but I think what we really intended to do is to vote nine to zero, and the reason being is that one of our members opposed a motion because they didn't realize that one of the items had been pulled out of it. And this was the cumulative traffic impact. What happened is after we vote, I always make sure I ask people why they voted, so I have something to say to you all when I come up here. And when we probed into it, we found out that one of our members was just confused. And in fact, had he understood what was really being voted on, it would have been a nine to zero. I say that just to try to simplify it. And then the item that he was concerned that we polled, we ended up voting to suggest approval at nine to zero anyway. And so the one that we spent the most time on, and I'm sure this is no surprise, is the Walnut Street corridor. We ended up voting five to four on this one, so we were split, and it was a very tight five to four. There was a couple of waverings either way. And observations, members said that Walnut Street corridor is a unique situation. It requires a unique solution. We've been working on it for a very long time. We had a plan that made an awful lot of sense a number of years ago, and it just hasn't quite evolved as we had hoped. We said that we felt that the corridor development has been constrained by some of the current limitations. However, some of our members had some real concerns with some of the buffer restrictions, and I understand subsequent to us reviewing this case, some of the buffer conditions have been revised. And since I am not aware of that, I'm going to refer to my expert here. Do you want to just come tell us what they did?
For the Walnut Street corridor item, after the Planning and Zoning Board hearing, the applicant did, or we did make an additional change to that item to increase the rear setback from three feet to 15 feet. And that setback combined with the buffer would guarantee that any structure would always be at least 40 feet from the property line.
And as always, when we have a change, I can't really anticipate what our members would have said, but I think there's a possibility we might have felt differently because that was the number one objective, or objection. We also had some concerns about potential on traffic impacts on Walnut Street. It's a fairly busy road, and the concern was access and egress to the site and additional traffic. I have to suggest to you that that wasn't the biggie. I think the buffers was the biggie.
Thank you, Ms. Swanstrom. Ms. Spearman, do you have additional comments?
I don't have any additional comments.
Could you put up the first slide you had with all the items? There you go. I would like to approach this, if we can go ahead and vote on amendment items that really don't need a lot of discussion, go ahead and do those, and then vote on the ones that do want discussion. I would like to discuss the Walnut Street corridor a little bit. Other items?
Can we just go in alphabetical order, because there are some that I do have want discussion with and some that I don't, but I need to be able to keep up with the staff report to get to that.
Okay.
So it would just, you know, the ones that maybe nobody has any heartburn, we just bang, bang, and the one that we need discussion, we have discussion.
I'm fine with it. Okay, the first one, Walnut Street corridor. I talked with the individual that's representing someone who's interested in developing the area that this will impact, and found out about the 40-foot buffer. My concerns were protecting the neighbors around it, and one was the buffer, and the other was the topography, and another one was the density. And my understanding from my conversation with him was that the topography is relatively flat. There is some change, but not a lot. So that's good as far as lighting and noise and everything else. And then the density is pretty much close to twice of what the trailer park would be currently, I think.
I don't know the specific.
I don't know the specific either, but.
But the maximum density that would be allowed with the amendment would be five units per acre.
Right. And so if that helps in this discussion, that's the information I found out through my conversations. And I'd open it up to the rest of you for comments, questions?
With the changes since the Planning and Zoning Board meeting and ensuring that we will not have a structure any closer than 40 feet to the property line, my concerns have been alleviated.
So have mine.
I mean, frankly, you know, we all develop a sense of, you know, predicting, you know, how some things shape out. And when I looked at all of these, I thought P and Z, that this would be the nine-zero one. It seemed so obvious. I mean, residential against residential, improving the area, on and on and on. And I believe that three-foot comment was always an error anyhow. It was always 40-foot, but it was misunderstood or whatever. So the good news is we got that clarified. And if the concern was that, you know, so be it. But I think since that's been addressed, you know, I think this is a great idea.
Yeah, I agree. I know, Jack, you and I sat in those homes and talked to those neighbors.
Absolutely.
Gosh, it had to be over 10 years ago. And we helped craft what was the existing Walnut Street corridor. And we said at the time, I remember saying, that we're going to give this a try and see if it'll work. And it's been a long time, and it didn't work. Nothing happened, so.
I think that's what Kerry does well. We revisit virtually anything that we do. We look for unintended consequences. We look for, you know, is it achieving what we wanted to? It wasn't. So instead of just ignoring it, we have an opportunity to clean it up and fix it up, and I think this is a great step.
Okay. So we want to take these one at a time, Mr. France? Okay? A motion for...
Make a motion to approve LDO Amendment Round 30, Item A.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Electronic gaming?
No concerns.
Any one for that one? Motion to approve that one, or a motion on that one?
Make a motion to approve Item B.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consistency with comprehensive plan?
Make a motion to approve Item C.
Second.
There's a motion, second. All I can say is, thank you for that one. That one I was really looking forward to. Motion to, there's a motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Transportation system requirements?
This one I struggle with.
Okay.
And especially since it's gotten more restrictive, since it's gone to the Planning and Zoning Board. I think originally, staff was proposing that if a property was near or adjacent to another property that had been rezoned in the past 12 months, then they'd have to do a TIA. Since it's gone to P and Z, they have now made it, if it's within 400 feet of a property that has been rezoned in the last 18 months, that they would have to do a TIA? Or is it 24 months?
It's back to 12 months in terms of the time limit. The distance did expand out from immediately adjacent to within 400 feet. The time period remains at 12 months. There was an additional component added that the cumulative traffic impact for the two different rezoning cases would not, if it exceeded 100 peak hour trips, it would require a study. However, the, for the use that's under consideration, the individual rezoning would need to generate at least 10 peak hour trips. So even if the 100 peak hour trip threshold was surpassed for the two combined, if the individual use generated less than 10, then that second use coming in would not have to do the traffic study.
More than 10, it would.
But if it's more than 10, it would.
I can think of, one too many years, my house probably generated 10 peak hour trips.
Your concern is that 10 is too low.
It's too low. I mean, you might have one development or rezoning that comes in, and they might, you know, generate 90 trips, or 95, 80, whatever the number is, and they don't have to do a TIA. But if somebody else comes in, breaks the 100, and it might only be 10 trips, or 11, or 12, or whatever, they now have the burden of having to do a traffic impact analysis, where the previous rezoning that impacted more so
The blind share, sure.
doesn't get penalized for it. So my concern is that the little guy is the one that ends up paying the price instead of, I understand the intent. I really do. And I think this is something we've always struggled with, where, yeah, one, this project or this project, yeah, it's 50 trips, it's 60 trips, but cumulatively, they darn sure make an impact. I just don't know that this is the way to address it.
Well, it sounds to me like the concern that's being raised is that it's, if it was a higher number so that it constituted a greater threshold, a greater percentage of the cumulative trips generated, then you would feel better about it. Let's say the first one generated 60, and this one generated 40, if there was some kind of percentage, if this generated 40% of the 100 or more, whatever it is, if it's 200, whatever, that causes it to trip. You know, I don't know what the numbers are, but it sounds like we just need to kind of massage that 10 hours, that 10 peak hour trip because it's not enough. And if we could somehow make some kind of relationship between this and the one that was, that preceded it, that feels right, you know. I'm not sure how we would do that, but it seems to me like some kind of percentage or relationship, ratio or something.
I don't know how difficult it would be if we could actually do some case studies of what we've approved and how this would have been impacted. How many 10s would we have had out there, you know? What would have been the smallest number we would have had? Would it have been the last one in? Would it have been 20? Would it have been 30? Would it have been 10? You know, I think that would be interesting information.
I think I would feel better with the percentage, like Ms. Robinson's talking about, but I don't know what the magic number is.
Right.
But.
One other thing that you brought up, and I think it's just, it might just be a typo, is in the background segment of this LDO, it does say 18 months, but in the proposed text, it says 12 months. So that's, I was under the same impression it was 18 months as well, because I didn't catch that in the proposed text section.
And the correct number is 12.
Okay. Twelve is better for me than... Well, I think this one we could send back to staff and say, give us some more information. 10 doesn't feel right, and we need it to, we need this one to be a substantial contributor to that 100-trip threshold to justify the responsibility it has to take on, because it's not cheap.
And the direction for what substantial means, would you recommend, like I said, case studies, or you have better...
I mean, it would be fascinating to hear case studies. I mean, I don't want, I don't want our staff to have to do a bunch of work that we're really not going to...
Yeah, I don't want them spending months looking through it.
This is going to, and we are guessing at a solution, and all we can do is try to guess one that we think feels right, and then try it out for a couple of years, and if it doesn't, change course and do a different number. So, you know, my thought would be to give staff direction that we want somehow some assurance that the second project is a substantial contributor. 10 doesn't feel like it's substantial enough. And whether that is a percentage or a ratio, you know, for every one in this one, there were at least, you know, or two in the other one, I don't know how you do the ratio really, but I think our staff could figure this out and help us come up with maybe two or three different approaches that might help.
I think there were several cases that we could go back and look at that I think generated some of this conversation. To start with, some examples, we could go back and take a look at those, those projects, and as well as any others that could fall into this as well, do an analysis of those, and use that to come back and see if we can make some improvements.
Okay. Do we want a motion? Do you need a motion?
I think we're clear.
Okay. Very good. And item E was... Signs?
Aye. It's a great idea. Glad that MetLife and others have come to us to suggest it.
Make a motion to approve Item E?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Use-related standards?
There are no comments. I'll make a motion to approve Item F?
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Looks like everybody's reading. Is everybody caught up?
We're just catching up on the list.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Minor modifications?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And finally, technical and minor amendments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion.
A second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion...
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Surprise.
I cut off the discussion. Would you like to make a comment?
My issue was the change in language regarding group homes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. France. Sorry about that.
It's, I don't think it'd win the day, so.
Okay, that concludes. Any other direction you need from us on that one item or anything else?
We, we're clear on the direction for the, for Item D.
Okay. And then I would need a motion, consistency, and reasonableness statement for Land Development Ordinance Text Amendments that we've approved. All items A through H except for D.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ayes are getting quieter and quieter. Thank you, Ms. Spearman.
Really didn't want some...
We now move to Item 6.5 and 6.6, the annexation and rezoning request for the first property. Staff's going to give us a report. We're going to hear from the Planning and Zoning Board, and we may take action. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone approximately 73.5 acres located off of Luter Shop Road. Subject property straddles the Chatham and Wake County property line. There is an annexation petition associated with this. As you've done in the past, the applicant's asked that you give an indication about how you feel about the rezoning before you take action on the annexation. So this is the subject property. There's one large tract here that only a portion of it's proposed for annexation, and that is the 73.5 acres. Vicinity map shows the subject property, again, highlighted in yellow. There is no transit impacts on the subject property. Cary's land use plan designates the property as very low density, conservation residential, very low density for the Cary portion, and for the portion of the property that's located in Chatham County, the designation on the land use plan and the joint Chatham County Cary land use plan is low density residential. The existing zoning is R-40 in Wake County and R-1 in Chatham County. The applicant is proposing residential 40 conditional use, and as indicated in your staff report, well, R-40 would have a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. There's an opportunity to reduce the lot size if the property's developed using a cluster development option, or using the conservation residential overlay district in Wake County. If annexed into Cary, and if Cary zoning is applied, the conservation residential overlay district would apply for the property located in Wake County, and both parcels or both properties would be subject to the watershed protection overlay district, Jordan Lake Proposed zoning conditions presented at the council meeting limited the use to detached residential and neighborhood recreation. There was concern from the neighborhood about compatibility of the use in terms of lot size, buffers, protection of streams and creeks, and location of connections to adjacent development. And we presented this slide, you may recall, showing the location of the Wood Hall development, which is currently in review to the north of the property. Since this was presented, the road that is shown here has been shifted closer to the stream buffer. So that's something that was a concern to adjacent property owners off of Old Thompson Road. Since you saw this, the applicant has offered additional zoning conditions, and that's to provide common open space along the western property boundary, and to dedicate a 20-foot wide graded greenway easement to the town of Cary within a portion of that open space. This is an exhibit provided by the applicant that shows the different areas where open space is proposed, and the greenway easement is proposed, and this zooms in on that slide. There is no Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources master plan for this area. The applicant voluntarily offered this greenway after staff had just pointed out that there was interest in seeing that the applicant felt that it was going to be a good service to the community. So this shows the open space here, 40 feet adjacent to Mr. Heath's property, and then the greenway easement here along the other two properties. The reason why it doesn't continue up along this area is because it's intended to follow a stream buffer and go in an alternate direction, but we don't know exactly how that's going to be situated yet. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended the case for approval by a vote of 7 to 2, and at this time, Mr. Swanstrom will speak to the discussion from the board, and then staff will be available for your questions.
Hopefully, this will be a little bit less complex than the last one. We, as noted, we did vote 7 to 2 on this one. I'm going to talk about the 7 first, and our members said it was consistent with the land use plan. We thought that the applicant had offered good conditions to address some of the neighbors' concerns, but to get to the 2, felt that the density transition from what could be as small as 15,000 square foot lots next to multiple acre lots was maybe too dramatic, a density transition. And so that was where the 2 came from.
Very good. And that is actually my question. Very rare we see an R-40 conditional, and I was wondering what the worst-case worst being, the most density possible.
Well, the density is not the issue, because that's the lot size. So the density still has to be consistent with the...
I...
Right. Yeah. So you're looking...
Same numbers of houses with smaller lots, or the same numbers of houses with bigger lots.
Exactly. I'm not talking about averages, I'm talking about, I guess, minimum lot sizes.
Yeah, yeah. So 15,000, I believe, I think is...
The minimum, which is...
And that depends on how much open space, how much bonus open space is provided, so...
So we're talking about roughly third acre lots in a one acre lot zoning, which gives me concern, considering where it is, so...
Well, you got to, I mean, there's two things that I... Well, is this the time for discussion, Mayor?
Yes. Yes, wide open.
Two concerns or thoughts that I have about this. One is, we have conflicting goals here, right? This is in the conservation overlay district, which we've already talked about at council, that we're not really thrilled with the way that experiment, I think Ms. Robinson called it, worked out. Because of the conservation overlay district, and because of what they've chosen here, that allows them to have wider swaths of open space with clustering. And so if you think about, the whole goal of conservation overlay districts is to reduce the impact on the environment, and clustering does that. Creates a better opportunity for sustainability, less lines going to all the homes. It's less of an impact on the environment. So there are these conflicting, in some cases, goals here, that they're going to... The overall density, you're right, is about one home an acre-ish, but then you've got a higher density just in this place, so that they can do the clustering. So I hear what you're saying, but we put that on ourselves, and we said, this is the goal of clustering. That's why they're choosing R-40.
Well, devil's advocate on that comment is, they're doing that because the buildable land is less, and that's how they can reach R-40, because of the stream buffers.
They can only cluster on the Wake County side, though, right?
They can only cluster on the Chatham County side. The Wake County side is where they could do the cluster development, or they could look at the conservation residential overlay district, which is similar in terms of, it's just a similar concept. Additional open space to do, as Ms. Bush suggested.
And the only... Moving off the density, the other issue I have is, and I don't want to be a broken record, but it comes up for me all the time, is whenever we have a neighborhood that's split between Wake County and Chatham County...
Oh, yeah, schools.
You know, we have the schools issue that we're... I hate to use the word condemn, because I don't mean it that way, but we are condemning this neighborhood to be split up from a schools perspective, because the families that are in Chatham County will not be able to send their kids to the Wake County school, so they either have to have a 45-minute drive, 40, 45-minute drive to the closest school, which is on the other side of Jordan Lake, or they have to do private schools, or appropriate, or whatever that looks like. And I know that some of the neighborhoods have gotten around this by having age restricted... I didn't look for you when I said age restricted. I didn't mean it. But age restricted housing, or whatever, to get around that, but I just hate that we don't have a solution for these families. And I know from my experience with talking with people in the peninsula, that it really does break neighborhoods apart.
I agree, but that's also a decision the homeowners will make.
Fire, beware.
Before they buy the home.
You're right.
And at the same time, it takes pressure off Wake County schools.
I totally understand it. Everybody has their own, you know, flag to carry.
I'm not a big fan generally of all the overlays that we have, but the conservation overlay is one that I like, and I think if it was used properly here, it would really help. We saw on the slide, one of the neighbors' concerns were protection of streams and creeks. Hopefully, if we use the conservation overlay and could cluster those homes, if you will, then we would be protecting more streams and creeks along the way. So, I mean, I think it's, again, we don't see too many R-40s, and I kind of like it the way it's presented.
So, we kind of need a head count, see where we're going here, I guess, before we proceed. I still have issues with it. I don't know if I can support this tonight, so I might be the long ranger. Anybody else with me? If not, we can go ahead and proceed with the annexation.
One last thing, I wanted to thank staff for working with, or the developer for working with staff about the greenway and the potential...
I liked that, yeah.
...allocation for space. And I'm also glad to hear in our pre-budget meetings that staff is looking at a master plan for adding greenways and parks to this area, because I think it's, what we're seeing is a much-needed work effort there, because as people are adding, we just don't have anything for that area we know we're going to build. Or not we're going to build, somebody's going to build it.
I support the rezoning. I think it's compatible with a lot that's around it, especially the property to the northwest. I'm not really a fan of the conservation overlay, just because of the impact to the character and the look and feel of, you know, some of our more rural areas. But if done right, and they surround it, you never know it's there. So, I mean, it's got its pros and its cons. I do like the environmental benefits, but I've also started learning a little bit more here lately about, what's it called, landscape urbanism? Some pretty neat kind of stuff there, too. So, my issue's with the darn road connection between the two properties, and that's not even a zoning decision. So, I appreciate the efforts of staff and the applicants of these properties to try to move the road away from the Heath's property as best they can, given buffer, you know, streams and wetlands and such. You know, hindsight being what it is, I just wish these two could have maybe come in next year, after we've made some LDO amendments regarding quasi-judicial stuff, but it's out of our control. There's nothing we can do, and I do appreciate the effort, so I will support the rezoning.
Okay. If we're ready, I would entertain a motion for the annexation.
Motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries 5 to 1. Is there a motion for the rezoning?
Make a motion to approve 14 REZ 32.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? No. Motion carries 4 to 2.
Make a motion to approve the consistency and reasonableness statement for 14 REZ 32.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Granton.
Thank you.
We now move to Item 6.10. At the beginning of the meeting, we adjusted the agenda, so Items 6, 10, and 11 could come before Items 6, 8, and 9. And so these are the requests for Kenny Road property rezonings, and first, we need to remove the items from the table. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so staff's going to give us a report. We're going to hear what the Planning and Zoning Board had to think about this at their November 20th meeting on this. I hope you got good notes. That was a long time ago. And, oh, they've already given a report. That was when they gave a report to us, but he's available for other comments. He's got good notes. And council may take action. This item requires a simple majority vote. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. This is the request to rezone approximately 58.1 acres. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow, south of Indian Wells Road, and on both the north and south side of Wakina Road. Land use plan designation is medium density residential, and then there's a portion of property with a Parks and Open Space designation. The existing zoning is residential 40, and the applicant has proposed two zoning districts, Resource and Recreation, highlighted in the dark green, and then R-8 conditional use. Proposed zoning conditions would limit the number of dwelling units to 130 detached residential units. The developer offered a condition that they shall not submit a real estate plat to subdivide more than 11 lots prior to July 1st, 2016. Previously, that had been January 1st, 2016, so that condition has been modified slightly. There's a number of traffic mitigations that were identified in the traffic study, and as you recall, there was a joint effort with this developer and other nearby rezoning cases to each take a portion of those traffic mitigations. Here's a broad overview of some of the rezoning cases that have been occurring in the general vicinity. The YMCA site, and the Phillips property, south of Indian Wells Road, and then the subject property, the Wakina Road property in green, those were the cases that all worked together on a traffic study mitigations, and each offered a portion of those suggested improvements. And then after this presentation, you'll hear the case Wakina Road South, which is highlighted in purple. There's a new proposed zoning condition that no more than 40 building permits would be issued until the portion of Highcroft Road on a certain parcel, which I'll show you in a moment, and here's the PIN number for that, is constructed. And when we first presented this to you at public hearing and presented it to the Planning and Zoning Board, this is a slide that had been prepared to identify some of the gaps and concerns about future Highcroft Drive. It showed the alignment based on the comprehensive transportation plan, identified some different gaps and opportunities. Since this was presented, a few updates that I just wanted to point out. Recently, there was a payment in lieu granted for a 200-foot section in this area of Highcroft Drive, and that was in conjunction with the Indian Wells subdivision. And then the zoning condition that was offered by the applicant just recently, it's actually on this parcel right here, the images looked right on my computer when I sent this over. I'm sorry, this circle should be right here on top of that section of the future Highcroft Drive. It's a distance of approximately 530 feet. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended this for approval by a vote of 6 to 2. Now, since that vote took place, that's when the zoning condition was offered by the applicant to not get more than 40 building permits until the portion of Highcroft Drive was completed on this parcel right here. So I can show you another slide if you'd like to see where that road alignment is. Again, that previous one that we had up, if you'd like to see that. I saw a few folks looking at that. Let me pull that one back up with the area rezoning cases. This shows you that 500-foot, 530-foot section in this area here. So this concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for your questions.
Council members, go ahead and start. I'm formulating my questions.
Well, this one's been around a long time, and everybody's been struggling with it. And I don't think we would be struggling with it if, at least in my opinion, for myself, and I think for most of us, I don't think we'd been struggling with it if we didn't basically know that it was basically a good rezoning. I think we wouldn't be struggling with it if this were something we just wouldn't want, we wouldn't have tabled it, we wouldn't have kept everybody waiting and working on it. You know, there's something good about this. Not only does it match our land use plan, we like this assemblage of properties. We've got property owners working together, so we don't have all this piecemeal rezoning everywhere. It's a unified group of folks. They're facilitating a much-needed road connection, which I believe is over and above what they would need to do. They've added the condition that they're only going to have 11, and the reason for that 11 houses by July 1st, 2016, is that's what's allowed now, 11. If there was no rezoning, there could be 11 houses right there at the moment. So that's where that number... So, that's where that number comes in. And the information they provided very recently, and as recently as tonight at the table, talks about the phasing and the school timeline, and I think that's great information, wonderful Really, if you look at it, that one paragraph there that the applicant pointed to, we have these 11 houses, and approximately 22 houses per year is what they're expecting as the absorption rate. Somewhere, I think it was 22, somewhere in the 20s. That's not a lot, and I think that's, that takes a lot of fear away from me to know about the school impact that we're going to have. That's going to take six years to build this thing out. What I'd like to see, because that is so important, I would love to see with that condition that talks about, if the applicant is willing to do this, the condition that talks about only 11 plats before July 1st, 16, to see how, if that could be expanded in some way, if he's willing to do that, to try and expand that in some way, to go through the next phase, at least for another year, no more than X number by X date. And the X, I don't know what that would be. But that would make me feel very comfortable, and I know we can't just have new conditions coming in at the last minute here.
10 days prior to the meeting. The applicant, I'm sure, would be willing to talk to you about that. I know that they have contractual agreements on the acquisition of the property. And the applicant's here, if you would like to have them speak to that. But you can't introduce and act on a condition tonight. It would have needed to have been introduced 10 days prior.
So, if he offered it, we really couldn't, we would
You couldn't take action on it tonight. We'd have to table it again.
We couldn't tentatively approve it, and then...
No.
Well, those are just my thoughts on it anyway. I mean, that's just, I'm the first one to comment, but...
Two things, just taking it from what you said. I want to also thank the applicant, because this timeline is very helpful to anybody looking at it. And of course, Wake County growth in schools has been everywhere, especially within the paper. We met with the Wake County Commissioners yesterday to talk about the significant growth in Western Cary and what their goals and objectives would be for addressing this issue. And I think the timeline helps. The timeline, though, is not binding, right? It's a goal, except for the 11 that I appreciate that the applicant put forward. It's what we think and when the houses might come online. And I think that's an important comment, that without those conditions or something put forward that makes this timeline real, we're not really, if you want to keep the timeline, then we need that in writing. You mentioned the 10-day item. Where does that come from?
It's in our ordinance.
So, our LDO specifies that any new conditions... Now, what about altered conditions?
That would be a new condition.
It would be? Okay.
Does the ordinance say must, or shall, or should?
Shall.
Okay.
So, because in the past, some of these things we've
We're trying.
That's where it came from, was, that's why that was introduced, is because there had been in years past, conditions offered at the podium that hadn't been vetted and hadn't been reviewed by staff or by other departments. And so, it was to make sure that there was very, very clear understanding of whether or not new conditions were enforceable and even appropriate, so.
So, from a process perspective, and I don't, I want to absolutely let the rest of council comment, if that is a, something that this council feels is necessary, what would be the process to then table it and allow the applicant to come back? Is that at some later point? Should it seem, I don't know...
I think, I think we need to hear from the applicant as to whether or not that's feasible.
Certainly.
And then, give them some indication about whether or not it would be approved without modifying the current condition.
We're not even sure he's willing to offer.
No, I'm not.
Right.
Just asking about the process. Okay, thank you.
Comments from this end?
While he's coming down, I would just, you know, say while I appreciate the applicant's willingness to, you know, offer the 11, and so, I can't think of any other development throughout the town that we've ever asked or looked for such type of phasing conditions regarding time and number of units and things like that. So, I kind of can't help but ask myself, are we really, do we have realistic expectations here, and why this project? So...
I think we're getting closer for me. I mean, I was far apart from this. I think density's been improved. I don't know how to describe schools. I wouldn't call it improved, but at least it's been addressed. I'm not happy about schools, but there's nothing they can do about it. So, I want to move to the roads. And if you go back to the slide you had with all the developments currently planned and processed, whatever, and walk me through, just so we're clear, on when we get connections.
There is...
How?
There is a portion of road on the Indian Wells development that will be constructed with development. There was a recent payment in lieu granted for the portion that would cross the stream. There is a gap here on this parcel that is not part of any of the assemblages.
But if I remember correctly, in that discussion, I can't remember what State Department said, no way, no how, until you have a
Functional alignment.
Plan, or whatever. We're not interested. So, that's what I'm, where I'm at right now. Walk me through how I get that.
I'm going to ask one of our engineers to speak to this.
I'll try to work maybe from Carpenter Fire Station Road and work our way south. The pointer that you have right now, this is in Cameron Pond. This is currently built. We have a parcel just immediately to the south of it that there has no pending zoning or site plan on that property, so there is a gap in that area. As Ms. Granon was talking about, the Indian Wells subdivision that went through quasi-judicial last month, that they will be building a majority of that through their property. However, there is a stream crossing that the Corps of Engineers was unlikely, they would grant a permit to cross that, because there's no logical termini going, connecting to a bigger road system. So, until that is, clarity is put in that, I think there's some cloudiness in whether they get a permit. To the south of the Indian Wells subdivision, there's also another vacant track that has no site plan or rezoning associated with it, so that is another gap. The case that you see tonight, immediately to the south, they will be building, the responsibility is part of a subdivision plan, if they choose to file a subdivision plan, they will be building it through their property. The condition they offer tonight would connect it all the way down to their, another 500 feet past Wakina Road. And then, there is a, immediately to the south of that, there is a small open space that is located in this area right here. There is no development plan for that. That's part of some open spaces, part of Highcroft. And then, just immediately south of that is Friars Gate subdivision, which they are currently processing a site plan for connection all the way to Morrisville Parkway. So, there are roughly about three gaps in that whole system from Morrisville Parkway to Carpenter Fire Station that we have no commitments for.
So, to summarize it all, everything we see here gets built, we have segments, we don't have a connection.
That's correct.
Okay. And that's my issue. That's where I'm at.
But if nothing gets built, you've got a lot bigger gaps.
Yeah.
Right.
But I mean, you're still going to have traffic issues.
This gets us a heck of a lot closer to making that road and that connection. And I think when you put all these developments, then you start convincing the Corps that, okay, now you have that termini that they'll grant the crossing, and gets you another step closer to getting that road connection. So, you can say no and never get it, or you can say yes and get a lot closer to it.
So, let me ask you this. Going back to the first two gaps, if everything builds out, and I'm just asking your opinion, and I know, you know, you're guessing, what is the likelihood the Corps would do anything if you had something to the south for them to point to? Does that change anything?
I think, to fill in the two gaps that you were talking about in this area, this one here and here, I think this is the more critical gap in this area. It does connect you to Carpenter Fire Station Road. The other logical termini, which would be down on Wakina Road going to the south and connecting to Morrisville Parkway, again, there's a very much smaller gap here that no one's, it's in, kind of, no one's made a commitment to build that yet. But again, we've had some very, very initial discussions with Friars Gate subdivision that they may be able to try to work with this development to make it happen. But again, we have not gotten anything finalized or even any, anything in writing on that either. So, but I think, I think the connection probably down to Morrisville Parkway probably is a easier way to get to a logical termini of a major road than probably going to, northward to Carpenter Fire Station Road.
So, then, that basically skips the Corps if you're going south.
Well, if you go south, you're still crossing a stream. But again, if you have pending development, that there is, there is high likelihood that you will have a connection made, that there's greater, they look at that a little bit differently and have a lot more confidence that a road's going to get built and it won't just terminate at a stream buffer for quite a few years.
And remind me what the traffic light improvements are at Indian Wells and 55. I remember their improvements coming, and I can't remember what they were.
Correct. The site plan, we, or, excuse me, the rezoning that was approved for the church, which is 14 REZ 13, which included, for the Crosspoint Church, which may include a YMCA, they are planning to extend a third lane about 200 feet north of Indian Wells, and it will extend all the way down Highway 55 to the south, about 1,200 feet. The other improvement that was done, a common improvement that was made by the Phillips property rezoning, which I got my pointer on right now, that's 14 REZ 12, and the Indian Wells development, they were going to put in a right-turn lane on eastbound Indian Wells Road. And then, as part of this rezoning case, they are, one of the conditions are, they were going to be adding a left-turn lane on the eastbound approach to Indian Wells, and there'll be some signal modifications there as well.
Thank you. I mean, this has been very helpful to me. I guess I'm still wavering on the road traffic issue, but my other issue would be your issue. So, I'd like to hear an answer to that. Before we ask the applicant up, is there any other questions or comments? And if council's okay, we'll bring the applicant up and...
I mean, as far as comments go, I mean, the only other thing I would say is that, you know, meets the land use plan and very much so on the low end at 3.1 units per acre. You know, you could say no to it, and if in a couple of years, we're not here, this could
Sure.
could end up developing a heck of a lot denser than that, so...
I mean, the density, I'm fine with. I think the schools have been addressed, yeah.
I really believe this is as good as we're going to get, and probably would ever get. So, I mean, I would support it.
Okay. If the applicant is willing and wants to, I think we have a question. Ms. Bush?
Mayor, council members, Randy Smith, GB Development.
No, I know we've met before and talked about some of these.
Good to see you.
And I appreciate the timeline that you shared with Councilmember Yurha and I. You've heard some of the comments that we've made.
For a long time.
And thank you for your time. Curious what your feedback is on this.
Collectively, we've looked at this a number of ways when we first entered into, with the sellers, and whether we assemble a large, a large number of these properties and go beyond that threshold where we would need the TIA and so forth. And then, in going through the processes and looking and saying, what is the town looking for? And that's that connectivity. So, engaging in, from the last few times that we've met, to say, it makes sense, let's go ahead and approach the McLambs or that piece to the south of Wakina, to try and get that connectivity. And furthermore, we met with the Preston folks or with the Highcroft LLC, and we procured that contract to buy that piece, and then afforded to say, we'll go ahead and build that road to the south. I would hope that the property owners in purple that do not have to maybe participate as we have in providing those improvements that we do since we were over that threshold, maybe they would contribute toward that little piece or that sliver that would ultimately make that connection all the way to Morrisville Parkway. That would make that completely, you know, but as far as some of the things that happen or that are needed for recording plats to get, Ed, for your, or Mr. Yurha, for your comments, and recording plats because of the infrastructure that's needed, it's not so simple as to say, we're going to record 11 lots in, you know, in the first three months, and then another 12 lots or 15 lots to try and keep that absorption at the timeline that you're looking for, is it's tied to the infrastructure and how the sewer runs, how the water runs. So, sometimes you may have to record a larger area, which is why we had thought about, maybe does it make sense to tie this to, you know, site plan approval or some other component or way to make sure that everybody's achieving what they're looking for and still be able to see this project go forward. Our sellers are certainly waffling, and they're getting very concerned that this thing has just gone so long, that we think if this thing does fail, that all of a sudden, you know, some of the folks that are there, that will now take the Highcroft Road and the magnitude of the improvement north, which we'd be affording and paying for, and to the south would no longer be required if it's just strictly a, you know, onesies, twosies, and again, the one-offs that are now going to be part of what you're going to be looking for versus this whole assemblage, that because of the size of it will allow that absorption and that amount of money that's being, you know, afforded to pay for those improvements that otherwise I don't see is going to happen again, as you'd said, Mr. Fens.
Looking for comments, questions?
I just want to make a motion.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
A pleasure.
All right. Making sure I'm on the right one here. Okay. What's the rezoning number on this? I want to make sure I hit the right one.
REZ, 14 REZ 08.
Okay. I make a motion to approve 14 REZ 08.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion.
Wait, did you, you made a motion to
Approve.
Approve. Okay. Sorry, I was distracted. I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting for.
Party people over on that side.
Party people on the side.
We have a motion and a second in favor of the rezoning. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
No, no, no. No, 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 Ed.
I'm sorry. Motion carries five to one. Thank you, Ms. Yurha. Sorry. Motion for the comprehensive plan consistency statement for rezoning 14 REZ 08.
Make a motion to approve the consistency and reasonable statement for REZ, 14 REZ 08.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for all of you that have been patient with us. You've worked with us, you've worked way beyond most people's work, and I hope we've got the best we could possibly get. At least, I feel that we have.
Still got one more Wakina Road.
What we've been
Well, I know, but I mean...
What we've been saying to the applicants that are coming to us in an area where we don't have enough school capacity, it's not a fixed no. It's a, just make a compelling case to us. Why is this worth us rezoning? Why is it worth this extra density in a place that's already constrained with resources? I think this applicant made a very compelling case, and he stepped up. I mean, his, this explanation of timing was fantastic, and I really appreciate all the work that they did. Between this and the road, I was very impressed.
Right. Thank you again. So, we're not done with Wakina Road.
I'm still here.
You're still here. ER 2. On item 6.8, the Wakina Road South rezoning request. Ms. Granon will once again give a report, and we're going to hear from Mr. Swanstrom again. Ms. Granon.
So, this is a, this is a case that was submitted shortly after the previous case had been presented had been presented for an initial public hearing. An assemblage of four additional property owners on Waukeahina Road requested a similar zoning designation for their 14.58 acre areas of land. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. All the properties are on the south side of Waukeahina Road, which gave us an opportunity to give this a different name for the rezoning case, so they wouldn't get quite as easily confused. The designation is medium density residential on the land use plan. Existing zoning is residential 40. The applicant is asking for residential eight conditional use, and the conditions proposed by the applicants would limit the use to detached residential and limit the density to 3.1 dwelling units per acre. There were no protest petitions. Once again, staff observed the Highcroft Collector Avenue situation and pointed that out to the property owners. And this is the same slide that you saw just a few minutes ago. The areas in purple are the subject property, the Highcroft, or the Waukeahina Road South property. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended this case for approval by a vote of seven to two. Mr. Swanstrom will speak to those discussions.
Well, in this case, I get to say many of the same things I just would've said in the previous case. We voted as, as you've been told, seven to two. Observation was, it's consistent with our land use plan, it's consistent with, well, now I can say consistent with rezonings in the area. Originally, we said consistent with rezonings nearby. I guess it's now a little tighter framework. We discussed tabling this one because we wanted to get at the cumulative traffic impacts thing that we've been talking about, and, and we had discussions about an LDO amendment that would get at it, but we weren't, we, we just didn't have our minds together on exactly what that would look like. And so we decided tabling it until we had some other action on an LDO amendment that we didn't know when was gonna happen. Probably didn't make sense. So, we went ahead and voted. The primary concern was cumulative traffic impacts, and we did have some discussion around schools as well. You know, same stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Swanstrom. Ms. Granton, you have additional comments? Nope. Questions for council members? I forgot to ask a question on the last one. Not that it really matters, but the sliver we're talking about to the south, to Friars PDD, what's that distance?
Let's see, the, well, in here, I...
Roughly?
Roughly 300 feet. This is 520 feet, this, this length in here. So I'm thinking maybe three to 350 for the area in here.
Okay. Comments, questions from council members?
Comments would be, it's pretty much same conditions as the previous rezoning, although I would offer that I actually happen to know one of the property owners casually. They have no intention of moving in my discussions with them. One of their greatest fears is that everything else around them develops, and then one day they decide to come in for a rezoning and all their new neighbors protest them. And we've seen that.
That can happen.
We've seen that happen time and time again. So, while they have no intention to go anywhere anytime soon, they want to kinda be treated equal and the same as those properties around them, so that if and when the time comes, they don't run into that issue. And I think that's very reasonable, and I think it's fair.
Sure.
I think it's reasonable, fair. I mean, we also, I don't know if they wanna be treated completely fairly or equitably with the last people, 'cause we made the last people wait forever and go through several iterations and, you know, come to the table. They, they made an incredibly compelling case. You know, we're being, we're looking at this, we're saying, why is this compelling? Why, why is this worthwhile in this area for us to rezone at this time?
Well, I mean, they have made some adjustments as well. I mean, they're coming with the same zoning condition for units per acre and such as the previous, so haven't had to wait as long, fair enough.
What is their contribution with the road network? What are they offering up?
I mean, I don't, they're not doing anything now, so I don't...
They're not building, right?
They, they did not, they were not part of the traffic study. They were not required to be part of the traffic study. They came in after the traffic study for the other properties were submitted, and the traffic study was completed.
And even with the new LDO amendments, they wouldn't meet that threshold, correct?
Well, the traffic study was already required for the previous case.
Right, so the, the LDO would matter if, if it had not met the threshold before. This one's already met the threshold.
Yeah, these 14 acres by themselves would not have triggered a traffic study.
Yep.
I understand that reasoning. It's my understanding also that they're not planning to develop right away, and it, maybe if I were in their position, I might do the same thing here at this point, to be fair. But we don't know that for, just like the last time.
Right, we don't.
I don't know that this timeline is gonna be upheld. I mean, I doubt very much that in the last case, our, this developer is going to sell to somebody else who would have a different timeline, but that could happen. And here, we don't know that we're not gonna have 45 houses next, you know, in six months from now. I don't think we are, but we don't know that, and I'd like to see something, you know, to assure me of that. So, based on my vote on the last one, I don't think I'm gonna be voting for this one.
Other comments?
Well, it's a good point. If we have concerns about how the rezoning is coming forward, I think the right thing to do is to table it now that we're expressing these concerns and let them come back to us again, rather than simply denying them. That's just my perspective. I think other people have different perspectives. Sometimes people would rather just have a denial and then have them come back and ask for a waiver of the one-year waiting period. But I feel comfortable tabling and giving them an opportunity to address the concerns that are raised.
Sure.
And that concern?
Well, first and foremost was timing that Ed was just mentioning. You know, we, it's one thing for somebody to say, kind of, conversationally, yeah, I don't plan on, on moving, I don't plan on rezoning anytime, or, you know, developing anytime soon, but it would feel more secure to a council member to have that as a condition, that there won't be any houses built or any, you know, any students generated before a certain date. And if they really don't plan on...
Then there's no...
Developing, they shouldn't, they shouldn't have a problem offering that as a condition.
That's a good point.
The applicant is agreeable to tabling this, so they could explore. The property's not for sale currently, so they don't have the same contractual problems that the previous applicant had. So they, they certainly would rather have it tabled so they can talk about possible timing on it.
Okay. I think that'd be reasonable, and I think, I may be alone on this, but I do wonder if there should be some kind, or it would be nice to hear about some kind of contribution to the road network in here if...
If it's developed.
If it's developed.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, everybody else is kind of...
I'd like to hear about that, too.
Yeah.
I think your points are excellent. I mean, I totally agree with you.
Make a motion to table 14 REZ 28.
There's a motion. Is there a second? And a second discussion. Just, just so we're clear to the applicant why we're, we're tabling, Ed would prefer something that would guarantee a timeline or, or something. I think Jennifer expressed the same. We would like to hear their thoughts or comments on the roads, if they would be interested in a condition on that and when development begins and that kind of thing. And those are our interests expressed. And I would like to add to that, I like the rezoning request, and if those things are answered, personally, I, I think it's a good rezoning request, so that's where I am.
The timeline thing I get, I mean, that's, that's fair. The contribution to the road, I mean, if, by ordinance, they would have to address their frontage, correct? Okay. If this didn't develop for 20, 30, 40 years, the Highcroft Drive is gonna be built, developed, probably whitened one time by then. So I guess I'm kinda curious, well, what are we looking?
They could, they could interchange something similar to what the previous case had, where it didn't talk about a specific monetary value, but said that no development shall occur until certain improvements are in place, so that you know you're not getting the impact of another 40 houses until the road is completed. And whether or not there's a private agreement with them and a developer is, doesn't need to be integrated into the zoning condition, it can just identify the timing of, you know, they're, they're not gonna be more than four lots until such and such happens, so they can explore what works for them.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion and a second to table. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Granton, unless you're still up there for the next one.
Got one more.
Takes us to item 6.12, I think we are on. It's a request for the waiver waiting period for subsequent rezoning application Keller Property. We're gonna hear from Ms. Granton. The council is asked to waive the waiting period, an affirmative vote of three-fourths of council is needing, so, needed, so that's five affirmative votes to approve the waiver. Ms. Granton?
Thank you. This is a request, as you stated, for a waiver to the one-year waiting period for the Keller Property. When this was presented to you and the case was denied, the applicant proposed transitional residential conditional use. The use proposed was townhomes with a maximum of 70 dwelling units per acre and a maximum density of 5.2 dwelling units per acre. The request letter that was sent to staff was for transitional residential conditional use, limiting the use to detached dwellings, maximum of 46 dwelling units and 3.5 dwelling units per acre. During public speaks out, you will recall, Mrs. Topps said that the applicant would like to modify that to be 43 dwelling units as opposed to 46. Just for a little refresher, subject property is located on the north side of Stevens Road, to the west of Piney Plains Road. The land use plan designation is medium density residential with a real small portion in parks and open space, and the current zoning is residential 40.
Thank you, Ms. Granton. And I'm glad you left that slide up there. That was my biggest concern, and we weren't losing office if we continued on with this. I think their proposal is completely different, completely meets the land use plan. I think it's a good proposal, and I think it's a good reason for a waiver. So that's where I'm sitting.
So is that your motion?
I'm not making the motion. I'll make the motion, okay?
I'll second.
The motion and a second discussion.
I think it's a textbook example of why we have a waiver.
Yep. Perfect. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Granton can sit down finally. And Ms. Tracy Stondino has been sitting there for close to three and a half hours, waiting for her item to come up.
Getting up very slowly.
We're at item 613, fiscal year 2016 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Ms. Stondino of our staff will present this item, and council may take action.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'll be presenting the funding recommendations for fiscal year 2016 for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The town expects to receive approximately $533,648 in CDBG funds for the next fiscal year from the Department, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. The amount we receive is based on a formula related to population, housing conditions, poverty rate, but is largely affected about the amount of funding that Congress allocates to the CDBG program and nationally. The program may be used for a wide variety of activities, including affordable housing, public services, public infrastructure, and economic development. This presentation tonight is the final scheduled event for the use of CDBG funds for the next fiscal year. Staff conducted two public community meetings, a public hearing that took place on March 26, and also an application period and a 30-day comment period. After tonight's presentation, council may be asked to adopt the 2016 Annual Action Plan on May 5, council meeting containing the projects to be funded for next fiscal year. HUD must receive the plans by May 15. The following are the recommendations for this next fiscal year, based on the applications that we received and the amount of funding we're expected to receive for next fiscal year. I'll start by going through the funds available. We're anticipating, again, $533,648 in CDBG funds. We have $30,095 reprogrammed from previous fiscal years. Program income anticipated $79,630. Affordable Housing Fund that is requested from the General Government Capital Fund from the town at $275,000, with a grand total of $918,373. We have broken up the projects across various community development initiatives. As you well know, we try to stretch and maximize the amount of dollars we get along with the support that's, that's supplemented through the town. Under Affordable Housing, we are recommending $150,000 Habitat for Humanity, $107,500. The Carrying Place, $150,000. The Tammy Lynn Center, $75,000. Under Economic Development, the Facade Improvement Program, $75,000. Section 108 loan repayment at $74,500. Under facility, public facilities, the Whiteup Foundation, $175,000. Under Public Services, the Whiteup Foundation at $35,000, the Hope Center at Pullen at $15,000. Under Administration and Reserves, Administration, $6,000. Minimum Housing Support, $50,000. And Reserve for Contingencies at $5,373. Staff recommends that you approve the list of CDBG funds, projects, and activities to be included in the fiscal year 2016 Annual Action Plan. I will open it up for any questions or discussions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Stondino? Comments, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the list of CDBG-funded projects and activities.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for waiting.
Thank you.
We now move to item 6.14, Google Fiber Huts. Ms. Cove of our staff gets this item. Wow. Still not the last item. I thought we were getting close.
We're getting closer. Thank you, mayor, and good evening, council. As the mayor indicated, this item for your consideration is several architectural elements of the Google Fiber Huts. Bechtel Infrastructure and Power Corporation is Google's engineering representative, and they are preparing the plans. They provided several samples of brick facades that could be used on the huts. Now, these samples were linked in your staff report, and I'll share those pictures with you again in a moment. Bechtel has identified the need for four huts to serve the fiber network. The potential locations are listed here. It is important to note that council will have the opportunity to further review the specific site details in conjunction with a license agreement that you will see at a future council meeting. Due to Google's schedule, however, they are seeking input on the architectural elements so they can move forward and order the huts. Bechtel is working on formal submittals of site plans for each of the hut locations. I've provided you here four sketches, preliminary sketches. And this is the first proposed hut location. It's proposed to be located off of Regency Parkway at Regency Park. The second location is off of Northwest Maynard Road in Godbold Park. The third proposed location is proposed on Lawrence Road, adjacent to Walnut Street And the last proposed location is at Thomas Brooks Park, adjacent to NC 540. So getting to the architectural features, Bechtel has provided five brick facade options for your review. Option one is a brick color of autumn sands with ABMM grout. Option two is autumn sands with a light gray grout. Option three is a brick color of old Detroit brick with a light gray grout color. And option four is Orlean sand brick, also with a light gray grout color. And the last option is medium iron spot with a light gray grout... a light gray grout color, and the last option is medium iron spot with a light gray grout color, and it's, please note that the grout color is different than what was presented in your staff report on this item. Bechtel has also provided some photos of typical brick huts with, typical fiber huts with brick siding, this is one, here's another example with that typical brick siding. Bechtel also provided a sample with a hut with hardy blank siding. I had to put one engineering slide in there for you, so-
Help yourself.
Had to do it, this is a typical fiber hut layout from, like, in aerial view, you can see a generator.
Oh, yeah, it looks like all the other huts we've seen.
Exactly, it's just like, it was lovely, from the side view, this is a photo of what it could look like.
But no barbed wire.
As noted on this slide, the Hudson Carry are proposed to be fenced, but not include the barbed wire on the top, as this slide does show, they will be landscaped to town standards, and will have brick exterior. So staff is recommending the approval of the proposed hut architectural concepts to allow Google to move forward with purchasing the huts, and we want to be sure that they recognize that all site plan requirements and any additional council comments and direction will need to be addressed, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Cove, Jack, that had to be a little deja vu seeing brick samples, it's like going back to the 90s.
Do we actually have to pick a brick?
If you had any comments on one, they would be more than happy to pick one for you, but if you had a preference, they'd be happy to take your preference, they need a brick color to place the order.
Do we need one brick color, or can they mix it between the two?
Shouldn't they blend with whatever's in the area?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, whatever, the brick is similar.
Let's let Lori do it, and then we can blame it on her.
I would love that opportunity.
I was thinking they should be concrete, so we can graph it. Option four looks sterile to me.
Which one, I'm sorry?
I don't know, New Orleans or something like that, number four?
Option four.
The last one that was kind of glossy, or-
No, I wouldn't love that one either, like one through three, I mean-
Three, yeah. The one without Detroit.
Or change the name.
Or change the name.
Yeah, change the name.
All look the same to me.
That's so weird.
I think it's kind of blends, yeah, that's weird.
I say one through three, but try to blend with whatever the-
With the nearest closest.
Facilities are nearby.
In most of the locations, there's not any other buildings, you know, very close to those sites.
One through three.
So you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
That's you.
That we approve the proposed hut concept for Google Huts.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second with, do we need to specify?
Would you like us to specify?
I think we're hearing the direction that it's to be in that range of one to three, we're fine with it.
We're going to blame you, so it doesn't matter. Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you, Ms. Cove.
Thank you.
Hey, we are at the last item, our last discussion item is delegation of authority resolution amendment, Mr. Shiber will present the item, and council may take action, Mr. Shiber.
Thank you, Mayor, council, you have before you a delegation of authority resolution amendment, which seeks revisions and updates, which are needed, staff believes to correspond to our recent reorganization, and this is, the reorganization was designed to improve process flow and efficiency, and this is a key component of that effort. The resolution provides the limits and the standards for when contractual, signing for contractual and other obligations can be signed by the assistant managers, town manager, and the deputy town manager. You will see those instruments, contracts, and other instruments listed on the staff report, items A through R, and as I indicated, the limits, as well as the standards for who would be signing which documents. Accordingly, staff recommends that council approve the revised resolution, and that also that council approve the attached template contracts, by providing these templates in a standard form will also help our efficiency and cut down on constant review and revision or development of these instruments as they come around, so we ask for your approval of those as well. And I'll, you have to answer any questions.
Very good, I think the staff report was thorough enough for me, it made common sense with the new structure, we have other comments, questions, a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
There's a motion and a second discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. The only remaining thing is to adjourn, and I'm just shocked that we're done with this agenda at 10:03, so I would have never guessed that, but I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we, motion is announced, we are adjourned, thank you.
Talk more about the brick.